Twenty seventh of April, two thousand and twenty one to order. For those of you in the crowd listening, we are going to begin with an executive session with our water attorney today. So we will be back in forty five to an hour to resume the work session. I'm sorry if you've plugged in and you're expecting us to go right at it, but we have an important water matter to discuss with our attorney. So we will see all of you shortly. So the rest of the council, if you could stop your video and mute and then go to the.
We need a motion.
I'm gonna make, yep. I move that the town council go into executive session pursuant to paragraph four B of section twenty four six four oh two CRS relating to conferences with the town's special water attorney for purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions. The pair and paragraph four E of section twenty four six four oh two CRS relating to determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations and instructing negotiators.
Second.
All right, there's a motion has been made. I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the, trying to find the actual language that I had right in front of me a minute ago. Oh, this is embarrassing.
Um, I'll send it to you.
Can he just reference the motion?
No, I think I gotta say, oh, here we go. All right, sorry about that. Um, motion has been made for the town council to go into an executive session pursuant to paragraph four B, section twenty four six four oh two CRS relating to conferences with the town's special water attorney for purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions. Paragraph four E of section twenty four six four oh two CRS relating to determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations and instructing negotiators. Subject of the executive session includes a confidential discussion with the town's special water attorney concerning the status of negotiations with Colorado Springs and other parties related to the town's water rights and water storage. Roll call.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Owen.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
It's Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Ms. Giallo is absent. Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Okay, I'll see you guys on the other call. April, whatever it is, April twenty seven. Um, thank you, everybody that hung on the line while we had our exec session with our water attorney. And we now move to planning commission decisions for April twentieth of two thousand and twenty one. Is there any questions? Anybody? Any, do you see a need for a call up this evening? All righty. We move on to legislative review. We have first up the mask, the mass on memo and ordinance. Rick, is this you?
Yes, Mayor Council, I have in front of you an emergency ordinance that would require all persons within the town of Breckenridge to comply with any local, state or federal orders requiring the wearing of face coverings. One key thing that this new emergency ordinance would do is repeal the previous ordinance, which created the mandatory mass zones that we had in town. And so what we did was make this one a little more generic. So as, as those orders tend to change, as we start to hopefully transition to some less restrictive requirements, this will cover whatever the current orders are and require people to follow whatever the current orders are. So this is an emerged ordinance and it would take a an affirmative vote of five of you in order for this to pass this evening.
The current, the current state orders, correct?
Correct. Uh, current, local, state or federal. And the reason we have federal is because there are some orders that come out, the federal orders related to transportation. And with our bus system, we have to make sure that we follow those federal transportation orders. And so that's why we have that in there also.
And so, Rick, what, what would the orders be right now? We would be removing the mass zones and then what would we, is it state or local that we would be complying with?
Local.
So the county has the mass mandate for inside public places?
Well, yes, still inside and they have it for outdoor when you are gonna be within somebody, a non-household member for fifteen minutes or greater. Remember that part? Um, now we're hearing, Shannon was just telling me that there's some chatter coming out, uh, some guidelines that they may drop all outdoor requirements, but we're not there yet. But we, this would allow us, once that happens, then that would be the new norm that this order would require people to follow, so.
Any other questions? Everybody good with this for this evening? All right. Uh, next we have moratorium extension council memo for two thousand and twenty one. Tim.
This, uh, this ordinance deals with the current moratorium on the submission of development permit applications that would include an amenity club. The current moratorium is set to expire on May twenty sixth. This ordinance, if it's adopted, it's adopt, would adopt as an emergency ordinance, would extend the moratorium until August twenty sixth. The thought being that hopefully that would give the council and staff enough time to, um, to agree on how the town ultimately wants to regulate the amenity clubs. The reason that this is drafted as an emergency ordinance is that if it's a non-emergency ordinance, the moratorium would expire before the new moratorium ordinance goes into effect. So you would end up with a gap between the current moratorium and the new moratorium, which is something we would like to avoid. Um, as councils aware, you've heard me talk about how a non-emergency ordinance takes two readings and then about thirty five days after second reading for it to be published and to become effective. And that additional thirty five day period would push the effective date of a non-emergency ordinance past the May twenty sixth deadline. So the ordinance is presented tonight for the council's consideration to effectively continue the moratorium until August twenty sixth. Gives town time to continue to work on this unique problem.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for Tim? It's pretty much what we talked about at the last meeting, so. All right, we will have that tonight. Uh, final bit of legislation, we have the four twenty seven twenty one ESG investment policy memo resolution. Brian.
You guys may recall back in March, we had a visit from our investment advisors from Chandler. Scott and Julie came and talked to us about what incorporating ESG or environmental, social and governance factors would mean for our investment portfolio. And the mem, as the memo explains, and as we talked about at that meeting, there really wouldn't be that much of an impact to our investment decisions, if any, going forward. We did look at it a little further after that work session and really saw no trades that would have been affected if we'd had these kinds of requirements in place. Our first three requirements will still be and will always be safety, liquidity and yield. That is not changing, but you could say in fourth place will be ESG considerations going forward.
Questions? Everybody good with this one?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Brian. We have public projects update. Hello, Shannon Smith.
Oh, Mayor and Council. I don't have anything to add to the memo today, but I'm happy to take questions on any projects.
Um, I had a general question a couple of meetings ago. We discussed potentially having a bid system where we have a very transparent preference giving to local contractors. Um, and I thought where council left, I mean personally, I would like to still explore an option like that where we can keep some of the contractors locally, at the same time have it be a ratio enough where we don't undermine the bid process.
Um, so Seth is working on developing that and will be.
Okay.
Council in May.
Great, thank you, Shannon.
Shannon, I had one other question and I'm sorry that I didn't go back into the packet a couple, like maybe a month ago. I couldn't remember, we recently had a letter from a Warriors Mark person about the sidewalks. And was that one that we just had to defer? Do you know that off the top of your head?
Um, so we had planned back in two thousand and twenty, pre-COVID, to do a short extension in Warriors Mark.
Right.
We did postpone that and it's not currently planned for two thousand and twenty one either. And we can discuss adding that back in for next year's work when we meet with council to discuss CIP moving forward.
I think since it's a public health and safety, I'd like to at least see and discuss whether we would have the opportunity to move that forward.
For two thousand and twenty one or for next year?
Next year.
Okay, definitely.
Thanks.
Other questions for Shannon? All right, thank you, Shannon.
You're welcome.
We have a parking garage. Anybody have any questions on that? They're great pictures. When do we get to put our hands in the concrete?
Way too late for that.
Also hand print. I think you said we could do that.
We can start putting siding on across from Town Hall on the, what direction is that, south side today?
Sweet. Oh, awesome. That's great news. All right, any other questions on parking structure or anything, public projects? Thank you, Shannon. Uh, we have a housing and childcare committee update and notes.
So getting the, okay, Nicole. Nicole's gonna go over the first part and I'll do the second part of.
Corey's here too.
Um, so I mean, we, uh, we, Brooke will probably talk about the special community meeting, but we did have a regular housing committee meeting. Um, the notes are in your packet and if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. Um, or childcare, there, I, those are both in the packet this week.
Anyone?
Nicole, I do, uh, two questions. Where is the Berlin Plaza? And where's the Gold King privatization? I, I saw on the map, but I didn't really know where they were.
So Berlin Plaza is kind of a baldy, like I forget which road it's off of, but it's up and unincorporated some of the county. Um, the reason we have that on our list is because we did pay for some TDRs for that project. And so that's actually going to be converted into owning, um, two units, uh, when that project is developed. So, um, I know that it's in process, but it hasn't started quite yet. Um, so that's why that is on our list of projects, um, but it's been on our list for a little while. So, um, that one we're excited about, I believe there'll be three bedroom units when they're constructed. Um, the Gold King lot is, um, basically in Warriors Mark. It's, try looking at the map and it's kind of confusing. I had to like really search for it when I was putting this map together. Um, it's, and I can maybe zoom in, which road that is.
Dennis, Warriors Mark, that answers the question.
Okay, okay, I was like, I get really specific, but yeah, it's kind of at the edge of, end of Warriors, Warriors Market. It's a unique site where the, the bottom part, like maybe one point three-ish acres is fairly flat. And then there's a steep grade up to kind of the top, um, of the site. So it's kind of a unique, um, property.
Dennis, I think that's, uh, Flintstone Lane.
Flintstone, yep, that's it.
And, and I believe, I believe Berlin Plaza is the baldy side of Sally Barber.
Where they're cutting all those trees, Dennis.
Yeah, yeah, so. Kind of by Vincent's old property.
Any other questions for, uh, either Nicole or Corey? Really? Nothing? Okay.
Actually, I have one question for Corey. Um, on the scholarship program for childcare, um, I guess I didn't realize that scholarships aren't available for in-home daycare. And I'm just curious, have we ever explored that or, um, potentially offering scholarships there, especially as the centers are in capacity? Or I just wanted to hear about that.
Sure, um, that is a great question and it has been discussed pre my time with the town. Um, and the, the biggest, um, holdback on that, it isn't that the, the program wouldn't fund in-home daycare facilities. It is, uh, set up to only fund nonprofit facilities and none of the, um, in-home daycares in Breckenridge are currently nonprofit.
Okay, that's helpful background, thank you.
And Carol, just to be specific, the other part of that conversation as well is that, um, the cost difference between childcare facility and in-home is pretty significant. And so, um, I think the, just the need is, and I could be wrong. I mean, we could definitely relook at this, but that's something we've talked about before is that the need um, for financial assistance in the, you know, in a, a more affordable setting, I think, is a little bit different as well. But I'm so glad you asked that, Carol, because, um, I did say that I would represent, um, our childcare facilities and the tuition assistance program because, you know, when we, um, started talking a couple of months ago um, about short-term rentals, we had, we sort of put on hold how we were going to, um, continue funding the tuition assistance program and not just tuition assistance, childcare in general. Um, and so we, I don't know, Rick, what you would suggest as far as getting something on the schedule to maybe understand or maybe staff can take care of, you know, understanding where the finances can come from into the future. But it makes everybody feel a little bit nervous that we've got about two years of funding left in that program. And not, I, I think there's money that we can put there and certainly, um, it's an important program and we want to support the employees in our town. But I think it's important that we go ahead and identify where that money is going to be coming from and really be a little more specific than, oh, there's money in several different pots that we can use.
What I'll do, Kelly, is I'm making a note. I think that that is a, a discussion that you could have as part of your two thousand and twenty-two budget process. Um, you know, and, uh, and, and that would be plenty of time to go in and identify and you, there's a couple of different things you could do. You know, we, we could, you could make a commitment as the council to transfer X amount of dollars immediately over into that, uh, you could, I mean, you could have that discussion sooner than budget too, if you want. And then you go into budget knowing that you've already committed or transferred some funds over there. So if that's something that you would prefer to try to discuss ahead of budget, you can do that certainly, but I, I think it'd be better to be part of the big picture.
I think so too. And also, you know, just a one-time funding transfer, I feel like is not the answer. What would be good is to know where these funds are going to come from into the future. So I think the budgeting discussion in September or October is perfect.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, anything else for childcare?
Go ahead, Rick.
All right. So I got two things I want to cover to you. I, I want to let, uh, you know, the viewers know that we held a special public housing committee meeting today. And the reason we did that is because we wanted to, uh, kind of capitalize on an opportunity to, to look at the possibility of exploring, uh, another high-density rental, um, development at the, uh, next to the Alta Verde site and, and to really build upon the development that's going on there and look for some efficiencies and savings and kind of developing two side-by-side sites with, with the same developer. And the council and the people on the committee were certainly supportive of, uh, of continuing to pursue that. And this is something the staff will be working on, uh, you know, and, and bringing back regular updates and, and start really looking at what, how that might map out and what it could look like. So there'll be certainly more to come in the near future, but I just wanted, uh, everybody to be aware of what we were doing there. The second item that I need to address with you involves, uh, one of the items in the town code of ethics and it deals with town contracts when we do that. So, um, as you recall, when we purchased, um, buy-down units in the past, we made a decision last fall to put a number, I think, six of those buy-down units into a business rental pool program. And we went out and, uh, interested businesses submitted their letter of interest. And then we held a, and part of that program involved renting them out and then making, uh, them available for sale to the business at the end of that rental period. And we held a lottery program, a lottery to draw the names of the businesses and the order in which they would be able to choose the property. And, um, so, you know, the top six or whatever got, you know, the, the units for rent. And then when it came time to offer them for purchase, uh, we went through the, the top six first and then we went through the other businesses that, in the order they were picked in the lottery. Well, uh, the business owned by Dick Carlton, one of our council members, was part of that lottery system. And Dick has elected to purchase one of the buy-down units. So the, under our town code, when it comes to town contracts, basically there are some exceptions to win a town officer, which is a town officer or an employee can enter into, uh, have interest in any contract made by the town. One of those exceptions is, uh, when it involves a contract that is awarded pursuant to a lottery or other method, when the person to whom the contract is awarded is selected by chance. This was a lottery system and we followed the order of that lottery. And so we feel that we've met that obligation. In order for me to, uh, the unit that, uh, that he, as part, you know, Dick is an owner and the, let me find the, hold on a minute. The name of the business is Dick and, Dick and Jane Enterprises Incorporated. Uh, they desire to purchase a now Colorado condominium, one-ten now Colorado court, unit E eight for the asking price that we put it out there, two eighty-eight, one fifty. And so in order for me to enter into that contract on behalf of the town, I must notify the town council of the proposed contract and explain that the proposed contract satisfies the requirements of the subsection in the code, which I have done. So you all good with that? Okay.
And this is one of the units that's for, um, employee housing and then it'll be deed restricted as such?
It is the, yes, it, it's deed restricted now. We put a deed restriction on it before we resell it, so it has to be, it can be owned by a business, but it must be occupied by someone working at least thirty hours in the county. It's what we call a light deed restriction, so it doesn't cap the appreciation.
Congratulations, Dick, you're really lucky.
It's okay with everybody?
His employees are lucky.
Yeah.
Exactly. All right, you got it, Rick?
Uh, that's all for housing.
Okay. Uh, committee reports, any, uh, any questions? Rick, I know Shannon's muted. How do we feel about the parking, um, management operators, the three that made it so far? Have we progressed from there?
Well, she hasn't, uh, she's still doing some follow-up stuff right now, right? Shannon, you can talk.
I can unmute. I'm here. Um, yeah, so we felt good about the, um, the candidates that we interviewed. We do have a finalist. We have some questions for that, um, entity. And then we'll probably end up moving forward, um, next week.
Okay.
For the week out, early the week after, maybe.
When will we know?
Um.
At that point?
I could, yeah, probably right after that. I'd rather not say just right now.
That's totally fine.
Yep.
I don't need, I don't need to know until I need to know.
Got it. I will let you know as soon as we're kind of final on it.
Great. Uh, any other questions on committees? All right, financials. Brian Leif.
Yeah. Wake up. Brian, are you doing financials? Dude, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Yes, financials. Um, so in your packet, we have the financials for March, which show the net taxable sales activity for, uh, January and February, which is maybe the thing we're, you know, most keen on, on observing right now. And that is comparing directly with our results from two thousand and twenty, understanding January and February were kind of our, our two normal months back in two thousand and twenty. So when we're looking at the net taxable sales, we can see that we're only about seven and three percent down for those two months, for that, that January and February. Um, we did this morning, Heather did a lot of number crunching on the March results, which were due on the twentieth of April. And what we saw there was actually that, um, March of two thousand and twenty-one was at almost ninety-seven million in sales tax activity, which if you take a look at the net taxable sales report, you can see is actually a little bit above the two thousand and nineteen result, which was the last normal March, because March of, of two thousand and twenty, we were basically shut down for half of that time period. So what we've seen is, um, you know, return to what you might call, I don't know, the new normal for now. So that is, um, obviously something really worth noting. The rest of the financials obviously speak to how we are following our expense budget and, um, and revenue budget. There's really nothing too notable on the expense side, but like I was just talking about, the net taxable sales on the revenue side, we are, um, we're seeing a return to some what we might call, you know, more normal numbers for the end of, of the winter season. Uh, something that I think, you know, we in finance are going to want to take a look at is, is maybe, as you do look at, for example, the executive summary page of the, of the financials, you'll see that we're comparing to a budget and we are at a hundred and sixty percent of budget for sales tax, two hundred and twenty for accommodations. That's because we're still comparing to that kind of break-even number that we determined back in October when we did the budget retreat. So going forward, I think we might, uh, talk with Rick and Shannon and then you guys as well and see what might be a more meaningful comparison going forward. But that's why you're seeing those, um, rather large increases from budget on the executive summary page, because we are comparing to the, the actual two thousand and twenty-one budget, which was, uh, you know, let me think of the right term, stark. You know, that was the, you know, if we're going lower than these revenue numbers, we're going to have to start looking at, uh, hitting reserves and things like that. So when we do look at those numbers here on the executive summary page, they look like, okay, we're twice our budget. But, you know, that doesn't mean we were twice, uh, a normal activity level, if that makes any sense. And then when you scroll down and you look at the net taxable sales, you'll see that we kind of are returning, at least for the time being, to a more normal, uh, activity level. And real estate transfer tax continues to, um, to be very close to last year's pace, which as we all know is, uh, the kind of record high year. So that real estate activity is, is continuing through April.
Hey, hey, Brian, um, just repeat for me, March nineteenth compared to twenty-one, what was that?
We were about two percent actually above March two thousand and nineteen results in two thousand and twenty-one. Um, we do have some of the sector information. The restaurant sector was still down. When we're comparing to two thousand and nineteen, you know, comparing to the last normal year, the restaurant sector was still down seventeen percent, which is, which is still a lot for that sector. But we saw retail up seventeen percent and short-term lodging, which has a large impact on your collections because of the higher tax rate. We saw that be up four percent. So it's, it's again, returning to normal, not for all sectors. The restaurant sector is still suffering the effects of obviously the restrictions due to COVID. Again, returning to normal, not for all sectors. The restaurant sector is still suffering the effects of obviously the restrictions due to COVID. But we're seeing that made up for. In the other sectors. So it was kind of a. I don't know, a surprising result, I suppose, but, uh, you know, we've all obviously been around downtown, so it does jive with what we've seen downtown.
Yeah, so it really does look like restaurant is pretty much the only restaurant bar are pretty much the only ones that are down. Um, I mean, I know, like, some are down a small amount, but. That's just incredible to me.
The six foot table distance is what's doing it.
Right.
I mean, that's what it is.
But if we get to blue, the six foot table distance is still in place, but if we get to green, it's gone. Is that correct?
We ex- we would expect in level green that what we've heard is that it could go to three foot spacing.
Three foot? Is that what you said?
Yes, three foot.
Which honestly, Kelly, is fairly normal for tables. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, you gotta have chairs and space for people to get up.
So.
Yeah.
You know, the governor kind of alluded to the fact that he hoped that we would be at three foot spacing by the beginning of the summer. Statewide. But that was a while ago and that all can change, obviously, but I guess that's what I'm hopeful for.
Yep.
Yeah, and it looks like with their vaccination numbers, it looks like we're tracking that way.
Yeah. So we're, yeah, Shannon has told you in your reports, right? We're our numbers, I mean, we're. Smack right in level blue right now, but. We have to also have sixty percent. Of full vaccination, Shannon?
Seventy, I thought it was seventy.
No, this is for blue. Green is seventy, Eric.
We're blue, yeah. I don't care about blue. Blue's not doing anybody any good.
Blue isn't blue it because once you're in blue, it doesn't, you can't, five star can't operate in green. So everybody's frozen in blue.
Yep.
Am I oversimplifying when I read that number that says seventy percent of people have gotten at least one? Shot, then it goes to reason that we should be able to hit the. That number within a month, right?
As long as people get the second shot, there's a trend right now of people not going for the second shot.
Right, I read that.
Not in Sonoma County necessarily.
Right, like five or eight percent or something.
I think that's nationwide and statewide, we're they're seeing that.
Get your second shot.
Yeah. Do you guys know of anybody that took advantage of the bus, the mobile bus yesterday or today here? Some of our bigger resorts were going with their workers, we're looking forward to that, but.
Oh, good.
Really good, the way they dressed it up. It looked really professional.
Shannon, will you give us a report on that tomorrow? Will they? Will they give you information on how that worked out?
I'll ask for it. I don't know what they have, but I'll get to what what they give me.
That'd be great.
And Scott Reed did say. For the bus, it was at the rec center on Monday, they had like thirty five people waiting when the bus arrived.
Oh, sweet.
So hopefully the other spots were as. Busy.
Cool.
I've heard it's been busy and the high schools doing sites tonight and tomorrow night at the school for the students.
Was the bus all walk in? Are they moving to that mo- model?
Yeah. All right, anything else on financials? Or vaccines?
Yeah.
It's good transition.
We really didn't, you know, we didn't have a COVID update, Eric.
Yeah.
On here and. Uh, I don't know if anybody has any, we before we jump into some of these other three big discussion topics, I don't know if anybody has any COVID questions for. The our resident expert, Shannon.
I tried to walk down Main Street without a mask and I couldn't do it. It's too many people wearing them, so.
Yeah.
Um, outside, answering that, just the metrics, not the metrics, but the restrictions in level green, other than the three feet spacing in restaurants, which sounds. Pretty typical anyway. Um, can you just reiterate again, what are the, if any restrictions, if we're in level green?
So I think the two things that we probably will see in level green are indoor masks and indoors and public places. Um, and then, uh, large events. That's what I've heard and and it could be different. I'm not sure. I don't know that we know exactly yet, but that's those are the two things for sure that we've been told.
With this part of what we're waiting for and a little more guidance relative to gatherings involving people that have been vaccinated. Uh, so that we can look at getting the council back in person. And. So we're, you know, I we're at this time, I do not want to plan for in person, the first meeting in May. And and then let's wait and see what guidance comes out in the next couple of weeks on. As we're progressing and what we may see. Uh, with regard to that, but. The other thing related to COVID that I can go ahead and ask you right now, I would like to. I would like to resend the town manager order number ten that we did. At and as part of the town manager order number eleven, I would reinstate the. Plastic bag fee for a large grocery stores. So you remember when we went in. And when I, when we originally wrote that, we were in some pretty tight restrictions and we were coming into the winter. And we were trying to move. We had large groups of people, we wanted to move them through the checkout quicker. Uh, well, the things have changed, right? It's slower. Our numbers are better. I think we should put the bag fee back. Reinstate the bag fee on large grocery stores. And so if you're supportive, I will issue town manager order. Number eleven tomorrow, that would. Uh, resend that previous order and reinstate that back to.
Everybody good with that?
Yep.
All right, anything else on COVID, Rick? COVID, Rick, that's what we call him. Uh, anybody need a five minute break?
Yes.
Can we take a quick five? All right. Quick.
Cool.
Five, and then we'll get get to the three bear issues. Ordinance changes. Shannon, is this you?
This is me. Um, so Mayor and Council, I put together a memo for you. Basically outlining some of the changes that we're recommending to the CIPA ordinance. Um, and this is in response to a couple of conversations that we've had about events in town and conversations that. I've been able to have with the CIPA committee and the events committee, but I will say mostly the CIPA committee has contributed. To this discussion and the recommendations that you have before you. Um, I won't run through the whole memo, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. And then I also have a couple of questions for you, particularly on fee waivers. And, uh, the recommendation for a peak time calendar. So before I get to those, I just am curious if you have any questions on any of the topics. That are noted in the memo or if you have anything. That you want to discuss or you want us to consider that we did not put in there.
Hey, Shannon, wasn't this also in response to? The surveys that we did of of the community members prior to COVID, prior prior to the pandemic. And the the overwhelming response we got regarding event fatigue. Didn't that drive some of this?
Yeah, I think it does drive some of it. You know, those surveys had, there are definitely some people in the community that feel. That it's too busy. Um, and then there's a segment of the community that feels like it's okay and. Kind of balancing both sides of that coin and not necessarily. Kind of swinging the pendulum all the way, one way or the other, but coming up with some additional. Structure for our CIPA group to use when they're evaluating. Uh, events, applications that come in and also, you know, really affects the CIPA committee as they evaluate events, but also for the events committee. You know, they think of that, you know, right ti- right event, right time, right reason. Piece of it as well. So it gives a little bit of structure to it and helps us, I think, better manage. When we have events so that we're not layering event on event on event.
Yeah, I really appreciate all the data that you and the events committee generated. To help us get to this point. I also wanted to just confirm, we we haven't canceled any events, correct? Other than COVID related, but I mean, this process, we we haven't canceled any events, correct?
We haven't canceled any events. I think, you know, just with this, all of this in mind, we are taking a harder look at some events, particular. I can think of one in particular. Um, that occurs on town owned property at, um, town recreation facility. Facilities, um, that tends to be a little overwhelming, um, and. Push on those resources and maybe not necessarily be exactly what we're looking for. So we're looking a little harder at some of those. Uh, but I don't believe we've canceled any events or turned away. Events at this point.
Thanks, Shannon.
Thanks, Dan.
Great job on this process.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd say, um, just after all our discussions, huge thank you to you, Shannon, everyone on the Breck Events Committee. Staff, the CIPA committee, I think after all the discussions gathering data. Where we're out with CIPA is a really great place. If I look back to the just strategy mix, what I think. The ordinance we're considering is really going to do is still support build business and branding, but within this really. Uplift the community benefit of aspects and encourage those types of events. Um, so I think this is great where we've landed.
I second that, Carol. I I really believe this is the case. Where we had a special special events committee. That did an excellent job bringing back a really good product. And I commend them. It's just. Really strong work.
You know, props go to Carol. She's on, she's the events committee rep from the town council.
You know, it could only be an upgrade from Dick taking over.
She's, she's firm but fair.
No, but really it was Breck Events Committee, CIPA and staff, like it was a very large effort, so thanks.
Shout out to Todd Rankin as well, who's chair of that committee.
Yep. Kelly?
Um. So do you, do you have any questions? Kelly?
Well, no, but I was just going to go through, um, I am, do you want me to say where I stand on these?
Yeah, go ahead, Kelly.
A few questions. So, um, I'm fine with the ten thousand dollar cap on waiver fees. I don't have at all, um, an understanding of. If that's the right number, so I'm trusting you guys on that. Um, but I am a, I am. Definitely okay with waiving fees when it seems appropriate. Um, as far as the town manager to make a final decision, I that's fine with me. Um, I definitely feel like we are all on an open communication basis. I think it's a lot of responsibility for one person to have to make that decision. So I'm not really sure if that's something that, uh, the town manager really wants, but, um, but. You know, if that's, if that's the right direction to go to keep things moving. That I'm fine with that.
The cat, the question really is, should we do it or should we just leave it to the town manager? That that's really the question. Do you want the council to review these things? Because you know, at some point, people will say. I would like to go to the town council. Do we want to allow? That to even be a a an avenue that all of a sudden, you know, we start to take on. This thing with with waving fees or should we just leave it with the town manager or his designate, which would probably be Shannon, really?
Yeah, it, I would rather leave it with the town manager. That's where I stand on that. Um, and then as far as the. Um. Intent to prohibit tier two and three events on certain dates. For me, this is part of a bigger conversation that I feel like. Um, is, you know, probably the next step to the destination management plan, which is sort of. Having a discussion about the year round economy. And I know that we have lots of, you know. I think, um. Differing opinions, but I don't think we're all that far off. And I'm not saying at all that we are, you know, shouldn't have a year round economy or should travel backwards. What I think is really important to do is define that goal a little bit more. And so I don't know. If we, I mean, maybe we should have more, um, events during certain dates, but. I don't feel like that analysis has been done to understand that goal. And so I really probably wouldn't. Know whether to have. Um, an event on or not have an event on certain dates until we sort of. Expand that discussion from the destination management plan. Because really, all we're trying to do here is take community direction. And so. You know, we need to have a little bit more clarity from the community as what, what the purpose of that is.
Dick?
Yeah, and I would just add from the entire community. We should get, as we did with the destination management plan, I, you know, Kelly, my read of that last one is is really around. Peak times. And I and I would be in agreement with empowering the the events committee and the process as it's been set up over the last six or eight years. To to, um, be able to. You know, to to not to prohibit, um, tier two and three events during peak times when we already have. Um, large iconic events and and where it was really going to strain the infrastructure of town and the. And the services of town. I'm fine with the ten thousand dollar cap on waiving fees. And I definitely think it telling town manager or town manager designate. Should be able to make these decisions because my experience serving on that on the events committee for a number of years. You know, most of these event producers need an answer quickly and. So I I think to to expedite and and to help facilitate. Their producing of the events that we should accommodate them and and get them a decision quickly, which I think town manager or town manager designate could do.
Thanks, Dick. Dennis?
Yeah, I am, I'm good with the ten thousand dollars. I'm good with the town manager making the final decision because I trust Rick, I mean. So no problem there. And then. I'm, uh, I'm with Dick with defining the goal a little more. I think, uh, no, actually, I'm with Dick on his reasoning, so.
Carol?
Yeah, I'm good with the ten thousand waiver. Um, the town manager designation should make that decision just for. Speed of process and in respect to the event producer. The country, the tier two and three events, as it's written right now. Um, I'm supportive with that, having the CIPA committee, um, reviewed by BEC and town council, create this peak time period calendar where. We don't necessarily consider new events and maybe encourage those events to. To be dur- held during less busy times, but going back to Kelly's point, um, I think we should have. Some sort of metrics that we're moving towards.
Jeffrey?
Yeah, I'm fine with everything that's been said as far as the cap and the waiving the fee, I think. Uh, what Dick said about the, um, some of these event organizers need an immediate response. I think, uh, the town manager or his designate can facilitate that. And as far as it. Did tier two and three, I mean, these are, yeah, I I I agree what has been said about these. These are, uh, uh, big events that. If put, if if they're on the same day, it. Pretty, it's a, it's fairly large, uh, percentage of our population. So, yeah, I'm, I'm agreeing with that as well.
All right. Um, yeah, you know, I I agree with the cap, but I I want to make sure that there's the potential. To go higher than that if necessary. And let me just give you a a example, that would be the pro cycling challenge when we had it the first time. It was a major iconic event the town was really supportive of. I I bet we waived more than ten thousand dollars in. What we did for that. So I think there are some times. That are very rare, you know, we don't have that coming up anytime soon that, you know, I I think it would be okay. Yeah, Dick.
I, hey, man, I agree with you on those type events, but I think that those that money will come from other funds, from opportunity funds and such, so.
Well, I just want to make sure that we all understand that that. Well, I just want to make sure that we all understand that, that those things do come up on, I mean, at this point, very rare occasion. But you know, if Rick comes back and says, you know, we want to do this, I want to just have that conversation now. I do think that the manager's office should appeal this. This is getting, that is stuff that is too in the weeds for the council. You know, we will have every body that wants to put on an event, asking you personally on the street for, for a hearing and why would you charge us? We're doing X for, you know, the children or whatever. So it would be nice to have that firewall between the council and the staff and let the staff handle that. And then I, I do agree that, that there needs to be some prohibition on tier two and tier three for certain events. I mean, I think outside of what, what Kelly talked about, which I agree with, there are days of the year that we do not want events. We don't want another tier two or three event during Oktoberfest or snow sculpture or spring break or any time period when we are so busy that an event actually detracts from, from the, you know, economic driver of this community. So I think there is a calendar to be made and, you know, parts of it, like Kelly said, have to come off that, that destination management plan also for, you know, things that occur in other times of the year when we're not as busy. But that, that can be left for another discussion. I'd like to see some guidance from CIPA for that or from the Events Committee for that. So is that good for you, Shannon?
That's great. And we'll bring back a lot of these pieces that you didn't get to see with the ordinance. Just so you, you have an idea of what we're working off of. And that $10,000 mark may change as we finalize the fee schedule. So if it looks like that's not a real fair number and we need to increase it, we'll bring that up to you as well. But thank you very much for your feedback. I appreciate it.
Great job, Shannon. Please pass that on to the Events Committee, too.
I will, absolutely.
Okay, now we move on to Walkable Maine. I, as you know, have a restaurant right on Walkable Maine or on Main Street. So I am going to recuse myself from the rest of this conversation. I'm going to just black out the video while you go, go ahead and have the discussion and just sit here and. I will be available if you have any questions about my observations that, you know, I mean, honestly, I'm right in the middle of, of Main Street. So if you have any questions I can answer, I'd be happy to do that, but I will not in any way be influencing or making a decision on this.
Eric, Eric, you know, under the, under the charter, the council as a body makes decisions on.
I always forget that.
On conflicts. So I think it would be appropriate for you to get input from the council and follow their direction.
All right. Dick, you want to start?
Sure. I, I frankly think it's important to have your voice. I, you're just one, one vote. And you spend a lot of time out there and have firsthand experience. So I, yes, you probably have some financial gain potential. But you're one of many, you know, so I'd, I'd like to hear you participate. You may not vote, but I'd like to hear you at least be available to answer questions, you know, and, and share your, your experiences.
I second that. I'd love to hear your opinion, Eric, on all of this because this is a, this is a big one.
I'm with Dick and I'm with Dick on this.
Kelly?
I don't know what the, I mean, I, if there's a specific language to financial gain, then I think, I mean, there is potentially a financial gain, especially from your location. So I think at the very least you shouldn't vote.
Fair enough. Carol?
Yeah, I agree with that just based on the language on the code and financial gain.
All right. Okay, you know, for me, it's really about, a lot of it is more about, you know, the appearance of impropriety, which, you know, there are people in the community that have written letters that honestly think I do this to make money, which I don't. You know, I, I'm here for the good of the community, not for my pocketbook. But be that as may, I will engage in the discussion and then I will not vote. Since that is the will of the council. So Mark, are you going to lead this, this off?
I will lead this off, Eric. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So last year, as a response to the COVID pandemic, we closed off part of Main Street as part of our Walkable Maine effort. The boundaries changed a little bit, but it ended up being at the north end. We closed it off at Watson, the south end at Jefferson, and that seemed to be a probably the most workable locations, at least last year in this. My memo outlines a number of the issues associated with the decision to bring back Walkable Maine this year or not. But I'll just point out that I outlined the staffing resources that were required in order to, you know, put on this event. It was a pretty significant amount of staffing time, some 2,000 hours of town staff. And then we had other nonprofits such as BCA and BTO involved as well as Red, White and Blue Fire District. So there's a considerable amount of effort that went into it, obviously, to make it happen. Provided some general observations of how it went from staff's perspective in the memo. I had a outline here on some of the other issues that are kind of more minor in the big scheme of things. But we did have some things that we waived in our code in order to facilitate more activity downtown. We got rid of our provision that says, or at least rescinded it for last year. And that says, you know, you can only have one piece of merchandise displayed outside. And we allowed people to put retailers to put racks out and, you know, their goods out on this sidewalk as long as it wasn't interfering with pedestrian traffic, that type of thing. We also allowed for sandwich board signs, which are prohibited normally. There was also the outdoor seating issue that we allowed some folks to use space that they had typically assigned to parking. We allowed them to use some of that parking space for additional seating. And finally, another thing that we did was we did it towards, you know, more for the winter. But I'm sure it would be a request for the summer as well is allowed the use of tents in some outdoor spaces to, you know, on private property. And tents are not normally allowed in the historic district. So those are all kind of waivers and kind of secondary issues to the issue of, you know, keeping Maine open or closed, but I wanted to just point them out. The memo does describe survey results that were sent out. We had quite a bit of response from the local residents and local businesses on their thoughts on Walkable Maine and bringing it back this year. Those are outlined further in the memo itself, but there was support for the, for the return. And then we outlined just a few of the pros and cons involved in this, which obviously I'm sure you all thought about as well. But it did, from a pros perspective, Walkable Maine did create a, you know, a large walkable experience and kind of helps promote some of our walkability goals here in the town. Obviously provide more opportunities for the local businesses that were on Main Street to increase their capacities. Particularly the restaurants having seating outside when they were limited in the indoor seating because of health department restrictions. You know, some of the cons are, you know, we lost one main arterial moving north, south through town. So from a, you know, traffic perspective, vehicles were, you know, restricted in terms of their opportunities to move through town. And we did lose about 118 parking spaces on Main Street itself within the closure area that are normally there and available for parking. So that's just a real high overview of the memo. There's an attachment that gave some further description of the staffing hour involved in this whole effort. There's just a few questions at the end of the memo regarding is the council desirable to see it, Walkable Maine come back this summer? And as well, the other questions about outdoor display, et cetera, which we'd like to get some input from the council if possible. Obviously, we need to start planning for this event soon if we are going to return it in 2021. So with that, we're.
We were, we were really hoping just to contain tonight's discussion in Walkable Maine period. And then talk about those other pieces at the first meeting in May.
That's fine, Eric. Yeah.
I, I think this one needs to go first because if Walkable Maine doesn't happen, then that's a different path. And if it does happen, so if we can, you know, just break this discussion into those two pieces, that'd be great.
Sure.
I have a question to start. When the red, white and blue chief presented last meeting or the meeting before, he did raise some issues about traffic concerns from a public safety standpoint. And I'm wondering, Mark, if you or Rick or Chief Baird could speak to that? And if there's any concerns from a public safety standpoint with having Main Street closed and less circulation?
Obviously it makes it more difficult for them to navigate to an emergency, right? Cause they have to go around that area and it, and if they have an emergency inside that closure area, then it becomes even more. But we accommodated it, you know, they'll come access to the closest possible point off a side street. And that, but it does, it does create a whole different way and approach for them to go than what would typically be the most direct route. And because the main station is located on Main Street, you'll, you, you probably noticed when, under normal circumstances, when we get, when they get an emergency call in the south end, they, they navigate down Main Street for a distance before they get off of it. And, and they like that route, you know, it's, it's been brought to our attention recently also, which I think is worth mentioning that, you know, there are some people that are concerned about the fire danger. We know that we're going to, that we're having, you know, we're at about 85% of snowfall in our area. So we're having less moisture than we would have in a normal year, which is always concerning when it comes to fire season. You know, you never hope that we get into a situation that involves any sort of, I just forgot the word, Shannon, evacuation, any sort of evacuation. But we have a fairly limited path for evacuation, north and south, right? And that, that also creates an evacuation concern if we were to ever be in there. Yeah, if we have notice, we'll, we'll plow through and open that up as quick as we can. If we have, if we have time and opportunity to engage and get, and get ahead of it, which probably we would unless it was a real severe situation. But those are, those are a couple of public safety issues that they're legitimate, but they can be overcome.
Do we have a kind of a Cliff Notes of the, of the survey? I, I looked at the survey, but just for those watching, it's kind of a Cliff Notes of the survey as far as the, the amount of people that would like to have us do that, the amount that wouldn't, you know, compared businesses compared to residents?
You know, Jeffrey, I think there, there's another level to this that's pretty interesting. If you go in and you read the comments.
Yeah.
There were a lot of people that were in favorable, favor of Walkable Maine. But if you go to the comments, they were in favor with caveats.
Yeah.
They were in favor if, they were in favor if town dressed it up better. They were in favor if, you know, it wasn't Jersey barriers. It was something else. They were in favor if, so, you know, I think that the numbers can really skew what the actual, I think feelings were. So you really have to read all the comments to get a, get a sense, I, I think of what, and then, then it becomes hard to tell exactly, you know, how many people really do want it. Well, they want it if we do this and they want it if we do this. But I'm assuming that by that they don't really want it if we don't do anything different. So.
Well, and also the question I think is, do they want it if we're at full capacity? Which wasn't one of the questions that was asked in the survey, which I think does.
Change things.
Yeah, it's just another thing to consider by us.
And the other point to Eric's.
Go ahead, Dick.
The other point to Eric's dumb comments, whereas how much, how much do, do we have available to spend? How much do we want to make available to spend on this? I, you know, I, I think Mark let us know, we spent significant dollars last year. And, and, you know, I, I would agree with some of the comments with, with a little more lead time and now a year of learning. You know, I think we could certainly dress it up quite a bit, but, but it's all money and it's significant money. So, you know, I think that, that's a, that's a consideration as well.
You guys have a sense that it, we, we, do we, we all agree or believe that it did help the, the Main Street businesses?
I don't think there's any doubt that it helped not only Main Street, but it helped lodging and it helped businesses off Main Street. But don't forget, we were in, I mean, we were in lockdown, you know, restaurants were at.
Minimal.
I mean, we're at minimal capacity. It was mostly to go food. There was some indoor capacity. But even outside of the capacity issue, Jeffrey, there were a lot of people that just did not want to go inside. There's a lot of visitors. So, you know, part of what we did last year really, I think, fit, really helped a need by people that were coming to town that did not feel like going indoors. And it, you know, it created a buzz. It was a different experience. You know, the pandemic created a completely different vibe everywhere in the world, just like here. And so as a business person that benefited from that, I will tell you that there were many days where our outside seating was full and our inside seating was empty. Had we not had that outside seating, we would have done considerably less.
Do, do we care that some, some of these other communities in, in Summit are going to do it? If we decide not to do it?
We don't care about that. We only care about our community and our businesses and our residents. You know, the ones that complain about the noise that it brought. There, there is a big difference this year. If we are at, you know, even a little less than 100%, there is a big difference for the, listen, people were so supportive last year that we did this. Even businesses that did not benefit, that were struggling, were so supportive because it brought people to town. I, I truly appreciate everything that, that residents in this community put up with to allow us to do this for the, for the businesses in the core of the town. And it was, I think wildly successful. This summer will be a different summer. This summer you're, you can, you know, potentially say that instead of, you know, even if we're not at 100%, if say, say my place is at, at 85 or 90%, that I will then be at 130 or 140% with those extra 30 people out front. You know, that's really, I, I think a big part of this question now. If, if we were still in the restrictions that we were last year, I think this would be a very easy question. It's not as easy anymore. And we have heard from some of the merchants around saying, okay, last year was fine. But this is now unfair to me because I don't have the ability to do that. And I, I think that's the larger question, not whether Frisco's doing it or not. It was, I agree with Eric. When I read that survey, there were a lot of yes, well, but if you do it this way, then it's a good idea. So I read it the same way you did, Eric, and it's one tool in our toolbox to help us make with this decision. But I also talked to people that lived on Park Avenue, that lived on French, High Street, Briar Rose. And they did not enjoy the increase in traffic that they experienced last year when we closed down Main Street.
Well, and I do think, you know, in those early summer months, I also have been thinking about the parking and that loss of parking. I mean, we still won't have the parking garage open. And we will be experiencing probably record high visitation, I would imagine, just based on, you know, well, last year's numbers were shocking, but then now we're really truly open. And hopefully we'll be open, you know, in green, like completely open. And so I do, I am concerned about that loss of parking. I don't think. In green, like completely open. And so I do, I am concerned about, um, that loss of parking. I don't think. Um, in my mind, I think we could lose some parking if it would help, you know, the community, if it would help. A substantial number of people, but I don't know about the loss of all of the parking on Main Street and. Um, but I think definitely for me, the consideration. Um, that I sort of keep coming to considerations, I think that outweigh. A lot of the other information is there is definitely an equity issue. And we heard it all throughout last year from lots of people who were outside of the. Um, outside of the closure area. And I think to kind of, um, enable that to persist really doesn't. Um, doesn't seem like a responsible decision. Um, and it, you know, it's just not fair and I know not everything's fair, but this is something that we do have more control over. Something that I am really concerned about is sort of a piece of what Eric was talking about. You know, if a restaurant that is in the closure is able to be. At not just a hundred percent capacity, but then even above a hundred percent capacity. And we already have an employment issue in this town. We know lots and lots of people are trying to hire and are understaffed. And I guess I would just really hate to see some people, you know, that are at a hundred and twenty percent capacity getting full staffed. And then somebody up on outside, you know, north of town or south of town, not being able to get full employees. Because there's just additional, um, pressure on that whole situation, the employee situation.
I, I'm, I'm really conflicted, honestly. I, I have a hard time. Um, not paying attention to the survey because it was overwhelmingly in favor. However, I do, you do see that, that, um, for the business, over sixty percent of the respondents. Were Main Street businesses and for the residential, only twenty-four percent. Of the respondents lived in the core of town, so. Um, you know, hey, it's like any survey, you know, it, the people. Um, with the most interest in the issue are going to fill it out and, you know, that's why all surveys go. Um, I, I, I really struggling with the amount of money it will take us to do it really well. And if we're gonna do it, I think we need to do it really well. Um, I struggle with Kelly's, Kelly, your comments and, uh. And Eric's as well, that, the, um. The part that probably makes me lean towards not wanting to do it is, is the impacts of the neighborhoods, the. I am very concerned about the fire chief's comments that Carol we spoke of, you know, that was gridlock on Park Avenue. And in the, the middle of winter and we had all three arteries open during that time. And typically we have more traffic in the summer than the winter in town. So it's, it's very concerning, you know, the life safety issues, um, with, we're anticipating to be a record summer. Um, so I'm, I'm probably slightly leaning against, but I, I, I can't. Um, ignore the, the survey, you know, the community speaking through the survey. And I also, you know, the restaurants, I mean, Eric and I have experienced it firsthand. I mean, we're the one sector that, um. You know, you don't wear masks inside, so we've, we've had the tightest restrictions and, um. You know, so if there's any chance that, that that's gonna continue through the summer. I would hate to not do it and then, then have restaurants, you know, miss an opportunity, so.
Is.
So I know I didn't really make a statement, but I'm, th- those are the things I'm considering. I'm really torn.
Um, well, I think you make a really, like, the point that all of us sort of feel is that we really, really want to support these. Um, you know, retail and restaurants who have had. A very, very difficult year and have been doing everything they can to make it work. I guess I'm wondering, and I agree with you, Dick, I'm really concerned about the costs and, you know, if people. Um, can't get enough staff to have an outdoor space and then we have long swaths where there isn't heavy participation. And it feels very empty and, um, you know, BCA is busy doing other things and they're not there to animate. And so I am worried, like, we need to provide a really terrific experience. Is there like an alternative where instead of closing such a huge. Portion of Main Street that we could support people, you know, in activating outdoor spaces. Maybe public spaces adjacent to their, um, business, but that wouldn't require the full-scale closure. And the kind of investment of everybody get matching, uh, you know. Launch or chairs and tables and, um, I guess I'm just trying to think. Um, outside the box on if there, you know, I know. We want to create an equitable situation and I just, I don't know if that's possible, but I guess I would like to, I would like to think about that. As far as providing additional opportunities for outside, um, gathering. And I do think it's important to remember that there's still going to be a segment of people who aren't going to feel comfortable going inside. Whether it's because, um, they just don't feel comfortable or they're traveling with children who aren't vaccinated. And so I do think if there's, you know, an opportunity to provide more than normal outdoor space. That it would go to good use this year and, and I think, you know, in our community, people want to be outside in the summer and so. I mean, I, in my mind, I would really love to see. Sort of activation this summer be the starting pathway, outdoor activation be the starting pathway for us. Reimagining the Riverwalk Alley and sort of tying it all in to, you know, back up to the parking structure. But I know that's, that's a big, big planning effort and I think that would take. For sure, a year, if not more. So I'm just wondering if there are things that people could do. You know, in their own space or adjacent parking space or public spaces that we could support, but that wouldn't. Require quite such a enormous. Um. Closure and, and also be able to be outside of just that one segment of road.
Right. Hey, um, Mark, wha- what's, what's the cost? Could, could you quantify the cost?
Jeffrey, we can't, we can't quantify the cost at, at all. Here, here's another issue you should be aware of. Cost aside, I don't know if we have the staff. Um, you know, we typically hire fourteen seasonal parks people. You know, this year we were trying to hire seven because we had cut down when we did some of the budget amendments on that. We're only able to get four right now. So, I mean, we're not even sure we're gonna get all the flowers planted that we typically plant in the summer season in town. And so, you know, having the staff to drop everything and do what we did last year. Uh, it could be a real challenge for us. I mean, the people, a- and these people aren't applying for the jobs. Out there right now and, uh, and, and it's what we're seeing across the board, whether they've left Summit, I don't, you know, or, or whatever the reason is. Um, it's, it's a challenge and so. You know, and Kelly's getting, Kelly's, you know, talking about the things that you're gonna talk about in that first week in May. Because, you know, that's at. How much of those other code restrictions are we willing to waive to allow people to utilize other spaces? Um, you know, that's a little, that, that's a different question, I think, than the, the walkable main.
But Rick, but Rick, if you guys, if you guys can't, um. Pull it off, then that's, then that's a deal breaker for me. I mean, I'm, I'm leaning towards, uh, doing the thing, but if, if it's gonna. If it's something that's just not doable or it's gonna take man hours away from public safety or other crucial, uh. Uh, crucial enterprises and then that's something, I don't know, I think we should know.
Well, that's why. Sharing that, that's a big piece of information that I think changes everything for me. I, I don't want to, and I think, um. No, that's an important issue because I think a couple of us alluded to it. Where are we gonna be able to provide the experience and the comment? I think a lot of, um. The people supportive, but they had huge issues with our aesthetics. And if we're gonna do it and do it haphazardly, it's not gonna align with our brand. Um, because we don't have the resources and staff, that's another issue.
Hey, Rick, can you summarize the survey? I had a question from RJ whether we could sort of, sort of summarize the results of it.
Well, hey, Eric, let me throw something in while Rick's looking at that. I, you know, for the employee thing. I mean, I think all the businesses in town are experiencing that, Rick, a lack of applications and difficulty in hiring. As I remember, FERC, um, indicated that we've lost a significant amount of our, of our workforce during the pandemic. They left and those trying to come back now, what I'm hearing, the people I'm talking to is there's nowhere to live. You know, there's nowhere that's affordable to live or there's nowhere to live. And so I think our, our, our housing, uh, workforce housing is, is really biting us here. Um, and then I also wanted to share, I meant to share this before. Um, of the six-person board of the Breckinridge Restaurant Association. Four members of the board are, are, um, in opposition of opening, of doing walkable main. So they would prefer not to do walkable main, four out of six. And then they're, yeah, we'll talk about the tents and all that when the time comes in a week. But the, the board of the restaurant association is, is not unanimous. They're split four to six, but. Uh, the four is, is not in favor.
Did you say you're split, they're split four to six?
I'm sorry, four to two, four of the six.
Okay, sorry.
Dick, that's very surprising. I'm really surprised to hear that because it benefited restaurants the most.
If it is such, it benefits certain restaurants, there's such an inequity. We spent. So much time left. The minute we decided we were gonna do walkable main, right? We started getting phone calls from people right on the outside edge of walkable main that said, you're killing us, you're gonna. People aren't gonna go beyond the barriers. So we expanded the barriers and then people didn't participate. And then we constant, all summer long, we heard from Main Street Station, right? Nobody's going south of the barriers and. And all of these things that were just a constant barrage of. You, what are you doing to help us? There, people put sandwich boards in the middle of walkable main to point people up, remember? To Ridge Street to get other businesses and, and so there was a lot of feeling. And a, a lot of dialogue that it very much benefited those businesses that were within that area, but that. You know, and we all seen the numbers, right? We've seen the numbers, retail did good. Um, restaurants have continued to be the ones that have suffered, uh, throughout this and. That was the best thing we could have done and I'm so proud of the staff and how they pulled it off. But it was a lot of work. It, it, Mark Johnston pretty much lived. On Main Street, you know, because a business would complain that the neighboring business was five feet over in front of their business. You know, and then we'd have to go remark and measure the areas and adjust people down and. You know, stuff that we did. And so when I talk about our opportunity to do that, it's time consuming. But we don't say no, and if it's something that's important to this community, we will find a way to make it happen. But it's also, it, it will be, it will be much more of a challenge this year. Uh, for us than probably it was even last year. Um, but we didn't have a choice last year. We have a choice this year. Things are gonna be closer to normal and I expect us to be. Uh, in level green. So. You know, I, I, I would question, you know, why are we doing it? It, it was an obvious answer last year. And Eric, I, I mean, I, I know that survey has got so many components to it. I mean, you know, what was it? Seventy-eight, eighty percent of people surprisingly were in favor of it. I mean, Dick alluded to the fact that, you know, the, the, who were the people that answered, uh, those things? We can make it available to anybody, uh, that wants to see it. There, there was a lot of written comments. And, and that's why I think it was important for people to read those written comments.
I, I think the red comments were really, um, important too to that. Okay, who else? Any other? Okay, how about a vote then?
I can say, um, I am a no vote. You know, before this discussion, I was in favor. I think we couldn't produce a walkable main. That would stand up to our brand, our aesthetics. I have public safety concerns from the comments, some that stood out were people with mobility issues. Um, that struggled with my walkable main, getting to where they want to go, um, and just the fairness of the issue. Um, but the big one is just not being able to deliver a walkable main to Rex's high standards. So I'm a no vote.
I agree with everything Carol said. I think it's right on point. Um, and with everything I had, I heard tonight, I don't think it's the best thing for our community if we're at level green. Um, I'm a no vote.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with comments made so far, um. Seeing the chatter between the board of the restaurant association, the, the leaders of that organization, I, al- along with, um. The public safety is really weighing heavy as, as well as the staffing concerns for the town. I, I don't want to do it if we can't do it really well. And Carol well said, and to where it strengthens our brand, so I'm a no.
I'm a no as well for all of the reasons and I do want to find, you know, ways to support the community. But, um, I don't think that this is the best thing that we can do for, you know. Equitably across our community, so I'm a no vote as well.
I, I came in here with clear intentions of voting yes on this thing, uh, just from the survey. Um, from what I learned today and, and also with the realization of where it seems like this vote is going. Um, I'll go no to, cause I think we can err on the side of caution. Um, I think it, it really helped our community last year in, uh, really a time of struggle. Um, I think it would have been a nice, uh, uh, one more year would have been nice. But again, with all the, uh, all the other concerns of the equity issues. Um, yeah, I, I will, uh, I will go no, but I would also say. Um, I think it did work last year and I want to thank the people on, uh, on Ridge. And Park Avenue who suffered through it because it did, I think it did keep our community afloat. So I, I think, again, erring on the side of caution, I'll say, I'll, I'll say no.
Hey, there it is. Um, we will move on to, uh, short-term rental regulation discussion. Rick?
Uh, okay. So, let me get, uh, to the thing here. Shannon put together a memo that's in your packet that summarized, um, the five roundtable discussions we did. And then as part of that, you'll see there was kind of some emerging themes that, that we think came out of those discussions. Um, this is such. This is such an important issue to this community and I know that it's something that the council really wants to. Um, you know, really weigh into and have an opportunity to have some good discussion. And, and probably really develop strategic, strategic steps that we want to do. And some of those will be different depending on the different strategy. And I think we've said all along that there's no silver bullet, uh, it's gonna be multiple strategies, each having a certain. Percent, uh, hopefully of success or improvement and depending on what that strategy is. And so what, what we try, what we want to hear from you. It, we really don't think that this is the time to start getting into those strategies and debating. The merits of the strategies or what we should do or not do and, uh, but. But we want to hear kind of generally, is there something else that you feel you need to know now or would like to know? And then I want to try to s- say, how quick do you want to get on this? And we can, I mean, I can schedule a special meeting involving all of you next week. If, if that's what it is and we, we take two hours or two and a half, whatever it takes and we start, uh. Jumping in, into this discussion and working through this in an organized manner and coming. and coming up with the strategies and the priorities that we want to focus on. And if there's something else you want to know between now and then, or, or if you think we need to gather more information before we have a special meeting of the council, this is that opportunity we want to hear back from you on a little bit of that procedural step.
And Rick, I, you know, I think I still want to see some more parsed out data about true numbers. You know, we, we did get some pushback during the roundtables about the fact that, well, your numbers are not right. This is not true. This, you know, so whatever we can get with those, you know, those numbers that show licenses, you know, you can look at what we have in the financials and from 2012 to now, we've increased a thousand short-term rental licenses. That's an easy number to throw around. I want to know how many of those, you know, what, what's the makeup? How many of those are timeshares? How many are in exempt? What we, you know, sort of call some of those more exempt properties like Beaver Runs that, that don't traditionally house long-term rentals. So I'd like to see some more refined data, number one. Number two, I'd like to see what our ability to create and what it would take for us to create a sort of a licensing and, uh, what's the word I'm looking for, Dick? Licensing and?
Compliance?
Compliance. Ding 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 ding, licensing and compliance division, you know, possibly in the housing department. Because I think one of the things we need to do while we are talking about this is to really beef up where we are as far as how our fees, or not our fees, how our licenses are working, how the compliance piece is working. We've heard from multiple people that the phone number doesn't really work. I want to know what it's going to take for us to get to that next step. If, if we're at a place right now where, where we are, we need to make sure that the people that have the licenses are treating their neighbors with the kind of respect that, you know, was the impetus for that hotline in the first place. And I don't think that is happening right now. So I, I really do think we need to go down that road. And we, I, I want to understand what the ramifications sort of financially to the town is of doing something like that. And how do we, you know, backfill that money then? You know, we talked about this being a data-driven discussion. I want to make sure we have the data that we're going to need to have this discussion. Because as we have said all along, this will be a multi-pronged approach to, you know, combination of regulation, you know, assistance to some short-term rentals who might want to turn to long-term rental. We, of course, are, you know, far down the path of building housing. And it seems like from some of the letters we got, people don't even understand the amount of time and money we have put into housing in this community. So we need to make sure that we have that data boiled down ahead of, in front of us so we can say to the people of the community, hey, this is what we have done. This is the amount we've have done. Let's compare that to the amount of, of new short-term rental licenses and see, you know, exactly what's going on. So I think just, those are just a few of the things. If we do have a meeting next week, I'd rather be a little later in the week. I'm having surgery Friday, so I don't know what Tuesday's going to look like for me.
And we don't have to, Nick. Certainly, I just threw that out as how quick we could respond to this. Data. I mean, we're struggling with some of that data, right? Because we weren't track, we weren't looking at these problems the same five years ago. We weren't collecting data a certain way. We were collecting license data. And, you know, so can I tell you out of the, from 2012 and the number of licenses we had then to the number we have now? Yes. Can I tell you how many of those were exempt and non-exempt? That the thousand new, yes, we can tell you that. We can't reliably tell. People say, well, how many long-term rental units do we have? We don't know that. I mean, because we don't have a license requirement for long-term rental units. We can tell you when certain, you know, thing, when we, somebody first buys a property, how it's being used. But we've gone over those data with people and, and certainly there's holes in that data, no doubt about it. So we, I mean, we'll continue to, to look at and what we refine, but some of that, we're going to have to start new and look for ways to develop strategies that develop good long-term rental data moving forward.
One thing, okay, one thing, I, a couple of things. You know, this is, this is not a problem that's unique to, to Breckenridge, to Summit County, you know, across the country, from Moab to Jackson to Hood River, to California. This is, this is an issue that other communities are dealing with. I'd like to have an idea of what other towns are doing, what worked, what has worked and what hasn't. Also, what are the possible incentives or D and D and dissentives that, that we can offer to hopefully to move maybe some of these units from, from short-term to long-term? If that's even feasible. And also, I'd like to wonder, like to find out what this state has in plan. Because a, a lot of this could be certainly lessened in some regard if the state would tax these businesses as they are, businesses. We don't have a, we don't have a control over that. But if the state, if, if it was a, if the long-term rentals were, I mean, short-term rentals were taxed as a, as a business says, then that, I think that could move things in, in that direction where, but, so that's what I'd like to, to look at. And I also will say, I, I think that VRB, that hotline works. I, I have, I've used it a number of times. My friends have used it a number of times. And I mean, there, there might have been a, there might have been a few days that, that it was a glitch. But for the most part, I think that thing, that thing does work. And yeah, there again, we did change the number. We kind of changed the, the program and it's so, and some interim might have been a mess up, but for the most part, it, yeah, it does work. So that's my thought on it. I, I'd like to, I'd like to, to look at this, you know, with the, with the correct da- data and make, and try to do something. Once we're well armed with, with good information. And I'm, I'm not, and I'm not inclined to, to make a snap decision in the next few weeks. Kind of trying to figure out what, what's the best way to do it and, and the way that we can get what we, our goals achieved with hurting the minimum amount of people.
Nick, I'd like to start by just thanking everyone that participated in our roundtables. I sent in on every one of them, all five of them, listened to them. And we got a lot of really good ideas from those, I thought. I, I think the one key point was, you know, there, there's, there's no silver bullet, you know? We're not gonna just make one big move and fix our issues. You know, I, I, you know, I know there was a lot of talk of, you know, and, and back to those roundtables, it, it, it also demonstrated there are a lot of different voices in our community. I think sometimes we focus in our own world and feel like, you know, that's the most important piece. But we need to make a decision for the whole community. We, we need to remember, you know, there were four goals to the destination management plan. And one of them was to fiercely protect the character of our town. And I, I, I feel like without workforce living here, we don't have any character in our town. And, you know, looking at the, the workforce, the housing needs assessment just today, and, and looking at those needs, I mean, they're enormous for, for housing needs. I mean, the numbers are staggering. And so we, we've got a big challenge. I, I, I am, am not in favor of waiting too long to do this because I don't think we're going to make one huge move. I think we need to, yes, we need to collect some more detailed data. So I don't think next week is the time to do it. I, I might think three weeks from today might be a good time to start and to have our special meeting and spend a couple of hours talking about it completely transparently. And, and, but, you know, that gives us three weeks to identify the data we're missing. You know, I, we were sent a spreadsheet, you know, which with my magnifying glass, I've been able to read, you know, what, what all of the, the other ski towns, you know, from Cast, from Colorado Association of Ski Towns, what all of the other towns are doing and the way it's short-term rentals and it's A to Z. There, there's some really heavy-handed stuff going on in other towns. And then there's others, you know, that are, have a pretty light touch. So I'm ready to, to, to sit down in a few weeks, you know, and, and have a, have a completely transparent discussion around this issue and, you know, and, and identify the issue and quantify the issue. And, and, yeah, I think take advantage of some of the ideas that we got at the roundtables. But I see it as an ongoing process. I don't, I don't think this is going to be a one and done type thing.
I agree with that. Um, just to follow up on really what several people have mentioned is the enforcement and compliance. I would like, really like to understand, you know, what, what we can do and hiring people. And I'm not sure that it would be just a part of the housing, you know, department. I, I think there may be some sort of partnership between that and, you know, I don't know if it would be police or something who would actually be able to provide some extra, some extra just force, you know, for some of these people who've mentioned that they've had issues over and over again and talked to the homeowner and nothing ever changes. So I don't know if it would be completely in the, in the housing department, but I'd kind of like staff to think a little bit about what that might look like that could really be successful. And I'd also like to know, you know, how many people would that be and kind of sort of ballpark costs of something like that? Because I think one of the things that I'm really paying attention to is if there are a lot of options on the table and, you know, short-term rentals are maybe interested in, you know, being able to fund some of these alternative programs to make it to sort of preserve the community character, then I think that we need to have some idea of what it's going to really take to do some of this stuff. And that goes same for the Housing Works Program. I'd really like to know, you know, what's it going to take? What financially is it going to take to make that program work and really to make those that successful? So I don't know if we would need to work directly with the FERC to identify and certainly some of the management companies who attended our roundtables, just to understand, you know, how we get some of those two bedrooms that are so close to possibly working in long-term favor to really tip the scales in that direction, or how we get the landlords to, you know, be more receptive? Whether it's simple things like we give them, you know, a stipend for when there's turnover and they've got to do a deep clean and new carpet and new appliances. I mean, I don't know. I think we really need to get into it and see how we can make that Housing Works Program work because the FERC guy who presented on that or the FERC, they really made it sound like they had thought of so many angles and it was really gonna be a great program. And it just wasn't quite the right timing and maybe not the right funding. And I think that that really has some legs that we could get behind. And then I'd really like from the housing to understand how many units we've got planned right now, what's on the horizon? I know there's a lot of things that are actually, you know, we're breaking ground on Alta Verde now. That's terrific. How many beds is that? And then what are the other things that are really coming down the pike? And we're gonna, you know, be embarking on in short order because building is obviously something that we've been very successful at and we need to continue doing. And there's a lot of, I think, thoughts and definitely plans being started, but let's make sure we know exactly what we're building right now. Because with that housing needs assessment and, you know, the breakdown by AMI is, that's a really a tough and in-your-face issue that we're going to have to get over. But also just knowing that we need thirteen hundred units, you know? I mean, that's a lot of units and we need to start understanding where we're gonna get these units. And then also working, I think we want to work maybe even with the county on this ADU question. And how can we incentivize that? How can we help that program be more streamlined instead of sort of, you know, a constant battle? And I know that there are some real concerns with that, whether it's just opening up another rental, you know, short-term rental, but that goes back to the enforcement. I mean, we have to take some of these risks, I think, and, and be able to enforce so that we can try to make, try to make all facets of this work. And then I would really like to understand, you know, if, if the best option is to go to the voters as far as, you know, a tax or something that we would need to go to the voters, I'd like to know what the timeline on something like that would be and how we would go about that. Because I know there are some instances where it, that would be the right move to make. And I just don't know, in the interest of, you know, preserving our current employee housing, how long it would take, what we would need to do in the meantime. I want to understand that situation better.
Thanks, Kelly. Who else? Carol?
Yeah, I agree with just the data, the information that everyone has asked for. I wouldn't wait more than three weeks for our special meeting. I think in our focus groups, we absolutely heard some great ideas, some low-hanging fruit that we can start moving on. As many others have said, there's no one silver bullet. This is going to be a multi-pronged approach. So I would like to start moving more quickly on some solutions and incentives. Um, Kelly just mentioned ADUs. I think, Rick, we have an upcoming meeting with the planning commission. Were we going to dive into that? So that's on?
Yeah, well, yes, you are, but we're trying to do it in person. So that's a delay in scheduling it, but.
Okay. Otherwise, like, again, hearing from especially the community, the small business focus group, how this is an immediate crisis, like we need to support our community, we need some solutions quickly. With that in mind, we've talked about data. The data we have isn't perfect. I think collecting as much as we can to inform decisions would be helpful. I don't know if anyone else saw, but Denver just decided to license long-term rentals, which I don't know is necessarily the direction we want to go. But I think we do need to start thinking for long-term decisions. We need to have better data and how do we track that? So exploring how we can be better with data collection. Others mentioned what parameters and incentives are in our toolbox. At one of the focus groups, we had a representative, I forget, from Airbnb or VRBO. I would love to reach out to her. She sounded like they wanted to be a community partner. They are supportive of certain regulations. They can be a partner on compliance. So I'd love to get more information from the platforms, how they can be a partner to town. Otherwise, I think we have a fairly good understanding, but also in our outreach, just clearly define what is exempt and what is non-exempt as we're having this discussion. And the last point I have, I think it's great. It's an issue, it's a hard conversation. Breckenridge is digging into this hard conversation and I'm proud that we are. But ultimately, we need a broader solution. I'd love to get the county involved if we can in one way or another, but just to, to make sure that they're working with us as well. So those are some things I'd like to see ahead of our discussion.
Hey, Carol, I apologize. I, I, you were talking about somebody partnering with the town and agree, they said they could partner with the town on compliance. Who were you referring to?
That was one of our focus groups. I can't remember which one, but it was a representative from either Airbnb or VRBO. I have it.
Expedia.
She just, she's on this call. Her name's Amber, I think. And she's happy to talk to us.
I think what Amber said was that VRBO and other platforms have ways to help us with enforcement. And it, it sounds like they do it all the time in towns all over the country.
Yeah, I know it. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Who else? Jeffrey?
I said my piece. I, I, I think we need to look at, yeah, I agree with much of what was said, but yeah, I, I said my piece. I I I think we need to look at, yeah, I agree with much of what was said, but yeah, I I think that one I'd like to, I I already just said it, I'd like to work with the state, see what the taxing options are. I'd like to agree with Kelly as how if we're going to do some sort of taxing, would have to go to the ballot and see what the timeline with that would be and what that money would be earmarked to. Would it be to to create more affordable housing units? Also, I think it's more crucial on the smaller places when there's a, you're at the precipice between whether to go long term or short term, if we can incentivize the the gold camps of the world, the Adelbys, you know. I don't know if we can do much about the Highlands, but the Adelbys of the world to go to err on the side of long term and make it worth their while to do so. And and I'm like, like, I agree with Dick. I think this is something but, you know, we we need to talk about, we need not to be afraid to make a tough decision.
All right, Dennis, did you give us your?
Not yet. I I learned a lot from those roundtables. I probably have two pages of notes on every committee and I agree with everything that we've said. I'd like to break it down once we have our information into short term and long term goals. And I would even go, if if we agree on it, I'd love to see us create a task force to help us with solutions. I think we had really good luck with the special committee, a special events committee. And I think that if we did a task force of people in the town, they could also help us make decisions. I don't know how everybody else feels about that. But I do realize that when we started with the word moratorium, we really created or everybody wasn't quite sure where we were going with this. And I think that maybe a good way for us to handle it or one way to handle it is to craft a message that says what our goals are here so that people understand what we're trying to do. I think they stopped at moratorium. They just feel that we're putting a short term moratorium on and they didn't listen to all the facts. So I'd like to hear people's thoughts on that.
Yeah, I mean, that, you know, the the messaging piece was tough, Dennis, because, you know, we we need to air everything out in these council meetings. We can't not talk about stuff because we're afraid that the, you know, that that's going to be highlighted. That was one part of a long discussion that we obviously didn't, there wasn't support for for that kind of thing. You know, it is a shame that that that's what got latched on to, but that's how these things usually go. You know, it is tough to message this. And, you know, we did have a whole week of of roundtables, you know, to sort of push that message out. And this is a very split. This is a very split issue in the community, you know, depending which which roundtable you want to pull up the notes for, people are either completely against doing anything or they are completely for doing everything. There there's very, you know, it it is really a divide in this community right now where the short term, long term rental thing is. The key, at least in my mind, is a balance. Because short term rentals don't survive without the employees that live in the long term rentals. I mean, that's just a fact, you know, short term rentals exist because it brings guests into town that then want to come down to the, you know, into town and shop and eat. And when there's no employees to work in those places, they're going to want out of that short term rental that they that they own. I mean, so there is a balance that is important for this council to strike. And to be to be labeled like we are anti short term rental, I I think is really unfair. That's what this town is about. This town is a short term rental lodging community. We don't have big hotels or many big hotels, I should say. And even the hotels we have, some of them are like Beaver Run are actually owner, different people own those places. That's not a hotel chain. So I think our goal is balance. When people say, what's your goal? Well, our goal is to find a balance here between short term rentals that are crucial to this community and long term rentals, which are crucial to this community. That's why this is going to be a a wealth of of programs and things that we end up doing. But we can't do anything before we know exactly what we get all that information sort of condensed. I mean, I know we have pages and pages of information. It needs to be condensed in a way that we can talk about it a little a little more effectively, I think, as we look for these issues. One thing that keeps coming to my mind, and this is obviously an aside, years ago, and I I feel like this is when Jack Wolf was bringing an F lot little F lot hotel to us. And the talk at the time was that this town is going to start being unsuccessful because the units that are aging will never be rented by somebody that comes from out of town. And it's interesting to see years later now that we are in X at just that completely opposite problem. And that used to be something that was talked about all the time. How are we going to house our guests when nobody wants to stay in an aging unit? And again, I mean, here we are. That's where our problem is, is people are staying in aging units and and creating a situation where we're losing a lot of long term rentals to the point that we can't build fast enough to solve the problem. So I think balance should be our keyword through this whole thing. I think to Jeffrey's point, we don't want to hurt anybody through this. We want to solve a problem that is a huge problem in this community, probably the biggest problem that we as a council will face.
All right.
Did you get enough out of that, Rick, to to get us, you know, Brian needs to dig into some of this, you know?
Yeah, we're going to continue to just get whatever data we could try to get and we'll, and you know what? We need to look at opportunities. I got to tell you, there is a survey put together by a group of people out there that is not a very well received survey. We've gotten a lot of complaints about, you know, that it just was not well put together and thinking that it came from the town. And I don't know what, if anything, it's going to collect, but we'll certainly take a look. I think it's trying to get at, you know, ownership and type of use.
And that was a county, that that's through the whole county, that survey.
Yeah. But you know, what we need to do and 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 a lot, you could see even in this conversation, some of your preferences, some of where you're leaning, some of what the strategies that you want to work on, whether it's housing works and and how are we going to incentivize long term rentals? Those are things that when we get together, we're going to come out and we're going to look and say, what are the top, you know, three to five initiatives that we think we can have the greatest success at? You know, and prioritize those. And each of those will have a different strategy. And, you know, and Dennis talked about, you know, a a task force. Well, I envision that you probably will have key stakeholders that we engage that are different for each strategy. Right? If it's a, if it's a long term rental strategy, there are people that were involved in our group that do that for a living. There are property management companies that we need to engage. Those are the people that have to help us come up with what it's going to take. They know the numbers. They know the gaps. They, I mean, those are the ones that we're going to need to engage to look at. How do we build upon? You know, it might be Anne Marie Olley, right, who's taken over the Housing Works Initiative on the other side of the county, even though it's a countywide program. What have they learned from it? So once we've identified those three to five initiatives, then we'll have to develop kind of a a working plan for each of those and what we're trying to achieve. You know, people keep asking for what's the council's goals? How are you going to measure success? What what's success going to look like? I mean, we could spend time talking about that at our next meeting, too. Success will come in many shapes and in degree. If if we if we get one more unit of housing that's available for the workforce, that's some level of success, right? But obviously, we want, you know, to look at that and how do we measure those things? So there is a tremendous, I I think, amount of work that has to go into this. And I think people that, you know, are going to need to step up and get engaged and continue to be engaged in this process and 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 help us work through some of this. Some of it, we can maybe have some quicker results and some will be, you know, turning a big ship. It'll take a while longer. How about if we go three weeks from the day, we're on the eighteenth of May, which is that off week, you know, between council meetings. I know Tuesdays tend to work good for some people because you're kind of programmed for Tuesdays to focus on council stuff. It's also, it is planning commission, but we tried to do these. If we can do them in the morning, we don't conflict with with planning commissions on those days.
I'm I'm good on the eighteen.
Yeah, I'm okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I am too. And Rick, your point's good. I I think all of us should, you know, compile our notes from the roundtables and really try to refine our thoughts into that top three to five initiatives and and, you know, so that in 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 that process, you know, reach out to you, I guess, Rick, and ask for the data that that any of us may find useful in the discussion. And then we come prepared to the meeting with with our thoughts.
And I probably be outbound. I'm going to bounce ideas off of you all, too, because, you know, our job in the next three weeks is trying to plan an agenda that we can facilitate through, you know, so that we're successful and that we, you know, that we really, you know, we're not going to solve the problem on the eighteenth, right? We're not going to, we're we're going to identify what those next steps are going to look like and how we're going to proceed. I also, you know what, there's been a rather quiet voice in this whole thing that needs to be a little more vocal. And that's Lori Best and you know, who has lived housing for twenty years in this community. You know, we've gotten, you know, we got realtors that gave us a series of questions about why hadn't the town done this? Why hadn't the town done that? We gave those to Lori to answer, which she was able to do so efficiently because she knows exactly why, what we have done, what those numbers look like, you know, what's why we do this approach versus this approach. And and I think that you know, in an in answer to what one of you stated, I I want as part of this next meeting, I'm going to bring housing in and housing is going to housing is going to kick this off trying to lay out the plan. Where we've been, what we've learned and what how we're, what we have in the pipeline right now versus town development, private development, et cetera, and where we are and some of the the challenges with different things. People say, you know, people ask about why haven't you engaged more federal programs and this and that? With, I think, without a real understanding of what all is involved and knowing what we've done today. So I want Lori will be a part of that kickoff and 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 looking at where we've been on that. So.
All right. Thanks, Rick. Thanks, everyone.
Okay, I'm going to shoot for the eighteenth. We'll send out a notice. Aaron obviously isn't here, but Kelly, what's the time that works good for, I mean, with with school? Is there, it was at eight or eight thirty? I know some people earlier is better.
Yeah, it's fine. Whatever you, whatever works for people, I'll make work.
All right.
Thanks.
You know, anybody listening, we've got, you know, there's been a bunch of Q and A going on and questions and stuff. If you have data that you'd like to share with us, please do. It's mayor@tannabreckenridge.com. I know Joel had an interesting story she put up about, you know, renting. You know, all that stuff's really very germane to our conversations. So anything you have, if you're, you know, if you run a lodging company and you have information you want to let us know about, you know, we want to, we want everything we can. We need to make the right decision. So anybody out there that wants to send us stuff, please do, and we will include it in our larger discussion. So. All right, we have about an hour before the night meeting.
We have a few things to.
Yeah, go ahead, Rick.
I have a list of stuff, so.
Yeah. Go to it.
I probably should have covered this under the COVID update, but I didn't, so I will now. I want to let you know where we're standing with regards to the current metrics and our recreational facilities. We, we, you know, we had, we probably could have moved to open the, not probably, we could have moved to open the ice rink prior to this past weekend for more capacity in there. We didn't have a great guidance when we, when the county first shifted over, you know, to the county run matrix on the sixteenth and we were, so we were kind of following the the guidance of that we have been working with before on limiting the number of spectators per, you know, per child playing out there. And there was a tournament last weekend and we got a little, we got some pushback and I know Dick got sucked in like he does on some of those hockey stuff. We've had conversations with Scott Reed. We have, we are removing the reservation system for the ice rink, so it's gone now. And we have gotten clarification from county health that we can have, you know, up to fifty people on ice and up to two hundred and twenty five people in the stands as long as we can maintain six foot spacing between, you know, non family members in there. The the capacity of that whole center, I think, is, I don't know, four hundred and fifty, eighty people. We we'll probably would never, we probably could never hit two twenty five with six foot spacing. But the reality is we can do a heck of a lot more than we've been doing. And, you know, for, I think there's some more hockey's going on, whatever it is right now, that, you know, we'll we'll have that capacity expanded. And tennis, tennis, the whole, the tennis center is built on reservations even during non COVID times anyways, right? That's how you reserve a court and all that. The the area that I'm personally still struggling with is the actual recreation center. Because we right now could be at one hundred percent occupancy, but we have to still be able to maintain six foot spacing inside. And it's a much harder facility to control because it's so big with so many different rooms in it that, especially in the weight room. And I I've been in there quite a bit lately and even with our reservation and limited occupancy, it's still hard to control people in that free weight area. They just tend to start working around. So if we were to drop the reservation system right now, we couldn't control the numbers. It is a slower time, but it's still the locals that are trying to get in there. There are some, there are some people that are pushing us to drop it. And we also know there are some people that have really appreciated, you know, the extra mile and they feel comfortable in there. I'm inclined to continue to evaluate the rec center on a weekly basis and maybe wait till mid May before we drop the reservation system, just to make sure that our numbers are continuing to track down, that we think we're going to get close to hitting, you know, our milestone by the end of May for Level Green. Because if we, if we drop it and we see a problem, it's very hard to get it back in in there. So, you know, I just, I wanted to share my thoughts with you on that, just to see if anybody had any real burning issues with that. Because I know you you occasionally are going to hear from people in the community also.
Rick, I'd just like to thank Scott and his team and the staff at the Ice Rink for the for the quick response and and you know, and working with the user groups and such. And yes, there is a high school spring league going on. Games will be going till early June, I think. Not every weekend are they home, but there will be games, so.
Are you, Dick, are you okay with me kind of playing it by ear for at least a couple more weeks and not fully opening up that rec center yet?
Yeah, yeah, I I go in there from time to time and I get it. Yeah, the 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 freeway room is tough. It's it's hard. So and we do need to get, you know, to the goal, so.
Rick, the reservation system in that rec center, when I've used it, it's really good. So I think we can continue with it and when we can drop it, we drop it.
For me, rarely have I not been able to get a reservation I wanted, so.
It's not that they, almost everybody can get one right now. The fact is, it's just a pain in the butt and you have to plan your day a little more accordingly. But I tell you what, they, it's been relaxed because they'll let people stay over a little longer if they're still working out. It's just, it gives us a level of control right now, so.
Yeah, I I go there. I used to go there a lot. I haven't been there since this pandemic. I'm I have no interest. I have no interest in working out, wearing a mask in, indoors. So, um, you know, I'm sure some of you guys are okay with it, or some of you gals as well, but, um, yeah, I do, I keep doing the reservation and those that want to, want to do that, uh, let's keep them as safe, as safe as possible. You know, those supposedly rec centers are some of the most risky, uh, venues in, in historically. And so I think err on the side of caution on those. So, Matt will look this way naturally.
You look a little soft. I'm worried about you.
Don't make me take off my shirt.
Please don't.
When we move to level green, um, is that the point that we'll get rid of the reservation system where do we have a metric where doing that?
Uh, what, you know, I think once, we either wait till we get to green or I, I feel pretty comfortable. We're a week or two away. And then, uh, cause I think then, you know, we have more shots in the arms, right? If we, even if we hit the fully vaccinated at 60%, which is, you know, that next goal, that's to me, one more milestone that might make me feel a little more comfortable about doing it. I, my guess is at level green, it'll, I don't know if people are still going to be required to wear a mask when they're in there exercising. We'll, we'll have to wait and see, but yes, we would not have, uh, we would not have a reservation system. And I think level green is going to be close to kind of filling fully open for us with the exception of not knowing what the mask stuff's going to look like.
Anyone else?
Seems very reasonable.
All right. Thank you. I just wanted you all to have a heads up in case you hear things.
What is the capacity at the rec center right now?
Per room, I think, uh, Scott chime in here somewhere, but I think we're doing around 50 per room during that time period, each time period.
Okay.
They're doing 52 reservations per hour.
The, the main problem is the six foot distance is really seems to be the, the, the issue, right?
And it's not per facility, that's per area. So weight room is separate from cardio, separate from pool. All right. Uh, we, there's been a request going out, um, from a parent, kind of a, a parent group to have another type of event for high school, uh, graduates. Because they're still going to have limited, my understanding, limited graduation ceremonies, uh, limiting the number of people, family members that can attend a per student. And so uh, they reached out to some of the communities, asking what they could do or what they would do, asking if somebody, you know, if they would consider banners, you know, with individual pictures on them per community where the child resides. Or if that was one option or one larger banner. I'm not sure exactly. Frisco's looking at some stuff, but really for brackets about, hey, would we do an overhead banner on Main Street and be open to a parade like we did last year? I think the parade was a pretty big hit. Uh, and it wasn't really that difficult of a planning exercise. Uh, for us, the banner is probably, you know, a two to $3,000 expense, um, that I'm sure they're going to want us to eat. We could do it so that we could reuse it again in future years, right?
I think we should use it and use it, do it every year. I think we should have banner congratulating graduates and, you know, just have a place where we can slide in a different date every year.
That makes sense.
I, I agree in that, that parade was an enormous hit last year. I have put a lot of smiles on a lot of, uh, pretty dreary faces.
Yeah.
And those kids are still not back in school, really. I mean, I am 100% supportive of anything we can do.
They are going to have prom, 10 people at a time.
No, they're not really.
Uh, they're going to have two groups and they get to dance in cohorts of 10 people in these little pods. I can't imagine. Kathy's going to, uh, going to chaperone, so you can ask her how that goes.
All right, we'll, uh, we'll move forward and, um, work with, see what we can get pulled together on that. Um, I told you earlier, I did want to remind you, if you have, if you have time, it might really be worthwhile based on all of the discussions that we're doing to tune into that housing needs summary report that we're gonna, is going to be for all the elected officials in the county at 4:00 PM this Thursday. This was the hot, the latest housing needs assessment that was done in 2019. A consultant is coming back and giving a summary of that report.
Can you send out that information to all of us?
Yes, we will. We send that out to you, uh, tomorrow. Okay?
Great.
Hey, Rick, could also could, could you send out, and I'm sure I could find it on my own, but I'm on dial up. Uh, the amount of, uh, workforce housing breakage is created compared to, uh, the other communities in the counties, in the county. That'd be nice to know. People ask me all the time and I know we've created a thousand plus, but I'm just kind of interested in what's, what goes on in the other communities.
Yeah, if we have it, yeah. Uh, all right.
We don't need it. I don't need it now. I just mean in.
No, I know, but I'm trying to take notes here and then.
Oh.
Shannon, you got that? I sent you all an email, but I tell you, I really, you know, kudos to the ski resort, kudos to Kelly. I know NRO was so appreciative. Um, you know, I think the ski area really stepped up, did a solid, uh, for our community this year. Um, I think when you have a chance to meet, uh, Jody Church, the new COO, I think it, uh, you know, I think we should thank her for, for helping, uh, to, to make that happen. And certainly NRO is extremely appreciative of that.
Eric, when Jody, um, comes on board, can we do a Zoom meet and greet with her?
Yeah, Eric and I want to try to sit down and have a quick meeting, but certainly there will be, I mean, I don't know if John will bring her, uh, he's not on tonight, is he? No. Uh, yeah, I don't know if we'll get her the next meeting, I think, when this gear reports, but we'll certainly, there will be an opportunity to meet with her. Yeah. Um, that's all I have. Shannon, am I missing something here? Hey, Eric, you want to do other reports?
Yeah, let's, uh, let's go to reports. Um, BCA. Kelly?
Now, I think the, the big news there was, was Matt's resignation and, uh, I think there's been a lot of work going on that. It seems that, uh, Tamara has, uh, hit the, hit the ground running. So, I think, Kelly, did I miss anything?
Nope, because, um, the priority projects are still the, um, you know, the arts district and then the air stage and both of those are great and exciting and exactly what the town's hoping for to support the community. So, um, they're just running with it.
Awesome. I did reach out to Matt and thanked him for, um, not only his time with the BCA, but, you know, he, he did help us out on the resiliency committee and, see committee, you know, he was on all those calls and, you know, stuff happens. I just thanked him. I, I enjoyed working with the guy, so. Um, events, anything to add? Carol?
No, we have not had a meeting since last time.
Uh, heritage and tourism, Dennis.
Yeah, I'm going to actually read this. This is right from Larissa, um, as of today, but, um, uh, from Larissa, we have a newly published BHA book written by longtime volunteers Bill Fountain and Sandy Mathers and funded by a BHA supporters. It's about the B and B Mine Company post-World War II, one of the last major mining efforts in the Breck era and the new pioneer of the 1960s, early 70s, who called many of the areas former mining camps home. Some longtime local stories are shared about in the book and it has a ton of photos from the 1960s and 1970s.
Where can you get the book, Dennis?
Um, actually Jeffrey, I'm glad you asked that question. Because, um, Larissa said, I'm happy to provide a copy for anyone, um, who'd like to have one.
Whoa.
I see some hands.
I'll, I'll contact Larissa, uh, personally, but I've have a couple of books by, by Bill Fountain. He, it really is, it's really good. I, I have one about on the Great Dredge, uh, that he wrote. And yeah, it's really interesting. I can't wait.
Well, let her know.
I had a bunch of employees lived up in the B and B.
You did?
Yeah. They used to have to go up there pretty often, bring them to work. Back in the late eighties and early nineties.
Oh, yeah. I had some similar experiences. It was scary when you got stuck in one of those cabins.
Kenny Doug, Joe Shepherd.
Oh, I did not, I did not have a chance to connect with Lucy, so I don't have an update from the BTO.
Great. Thank you, Dennis.
Kenny Doug, Kenny Doug lived up there.
Hey, uh, Jeffrey, uh, Aaron's not here. Did she deputize you to do open space?
Yes, and, and you know, I hate to toot my own horn, uh, but I filled it admirably. And here's the recap. Um, uh, we had a site visit to the Riley Dredge parking lot and, uh, BOSAC was, uh, was divided on whether to simply improve the drainage, uh, in, in the entrance culvert and, uh, ingrading or do that and take out uh, three trees to increase the size of and create a, a line, a different alignment of the parking lot to fit more, um, uh, cars in. Also, um, the kind of the, we imagine a lot of this was in response to, uh, uh, the town's, uh, the council's, um, stance on, uh, more programming up on French Creek. So, it was pretty much split. Um, I think what, uh, we're going to probably, depending on the council's direction, err on the side of improving the drainage, the entrance, I mean, the, the culvert, the entrance into the, um, the dredge parking lot and maybe cleaning it up a little bit, but not cutting down trees, not expanding the size of it. Um, that's, that's what, how I see it going, but it's, it's pretty much, uh, uh, I think in, in the council's hands for a lot of it. Uh, annual open house, it was moved to June because we can't do it, uh, you can't really do it inside, uh, because in this current, um, in the current restrictions, but if things change, that will change. We usually do a yearly enter, open house, kind of a trails, uh, update and, and report. Pretty cool thing. We're thinking of, uh, designing, we've actually have designed a little mountain hiking only trail. As you know, this is, uh, it's kind of the, uh, it will spread out a little bit of the impact, keep it, uh, over to a little bit to the south, right from the ice rink. So it could incorporate the, uh, the, the troll and then a hiking trail up Little Mountain. Um, it's, uh, hiking only. It's kind of steep terrain, but it'll get you to a, a nice overlook, almost to the summit of Little Mountain. And I, I think that's a, I think it was pretty much soundly endorsed by, uh, by BOSAC. Um, uh, BOSAC did ask the staff if they could maybe look at the trail and make it into a loop or at least a lollipop to add a little bit of more interest to it. Um, we also had a report from, uh, uh, Jessica Doran from EcoMetrix, uh, kind of the health of cucumber gulch. In all and all, uh, the health is pretty good. It is some of the, some of the categories, um, remain the same, some improved slightly and some were a little bit less and a little bit, uh, more to go into, too much to go into now. But, uh, that, that was, that data is available. Um, you know, one thing, of course, it's the, the big concern's always, um, the, the drainage from Peak Eight and also, uh, uh, the, it's so, so near some huge hotels, the BGV, uh, the Peak One, uh, uh, whatever that place is up there where the, um, concierge kind of send families into the gulch. And so we're, we've had, had some luck with docents and kind of organized nature walks. But still, that's always a concern when human impact intrudes on wildlife. And there was, speaking of wildlife, the video cameras picked up bears, um, minks, uh, yeah, mink, minks. And beavers is two beaver dams right now, moose, uh, coyotes and, and all that. So that was kind of cool. So there is some wildlife, a abundance of wildlife in the gulch and the whole, the, the tension is to make sure that the humans don't interfere too much with the habitat. Um, they did some, let's see, uh, some work on middle gouts, uh, uh, and did to redistribute water. Um, and then that's about, yeah, check out that, uh, check out that data from EcoMetrix. Uh, we also talked a little bit about, it was broached, uh, more in a, more in a, um, ad hoc, uh, anecdotal manner about whether, whether we should, uh, BOSAC Town should, uh, pump the brakes in the, uh, in the French Gulch region as far as at least in the short term, uh, about the, certainly about the parking lot expansion and the, the, the new proposed Rose Trail. Um, again, again, BOSAC was divided on that. Some people say, uh, let's, let's provide a, uh, continue providing, uh, uh, opportunities to recreate in the gulch and others in the French Creek drainage. And others thought, well, considering all that's gone on the last year, let's, let's wait a year before we add more program to there. But I think we'd look, I think BOSAC will look to council's direction on that because ultimately, uh, the philosophy of the community's recreation is in the council's hands. So that's about it.
Nice work, Jeffrey.
Eric?
Yes, sir.
Does the council, how does the council want to weigh in on those? Do you want to see a kind of a work session presentation by staff so that you have an opportunity to weigh in on the parking lot deal and also the other issue?
Yeah, I think so. I think that's a good way to do it.
Oh, oh, let me add before I, before I get, I forget, uh, we are going to do some sort of facilitator, some sort of, uh, uh, I don't know what's it called, but someone's going to come in and, and kind of disseminate all the opinions from, uh, from the various BOSAC work groups to try to establish a philosophy and an agreement of, and that's, that's coming up. And that's one of the issues was, well, maybe we should wait until that is done before we, uh, before we decide any, any sort of, uh, added programming. So that, excuse me for interrupting.
Very good.
That's kind of what I was actually going to say. So it was a perfect interruption, but I feel like, um, my preference would be that we get, you know, sort of analyze what our grand plan is, um, to sort of understand that better, you know, where should the children's trails be? Where should parking be? I mean, certainly drainage issues, that's one thing that I feel, you know, very confident in. Let's go ahead and address those kind of things because we don't want them to persist through a bunch of spring runoffs. But as far as new trails, I just, I'm going to have a really hard time saying this is the right or the wrong thing to do without understanding the master plan. But if it's other people's interest to just go ahead and see that and make a one-off decision, then I can certainly do that. But I think my preference would be to know what the, what the plan is and then, and then decide. Cause I feel like I can't really weigh in on with only this much of the picture, but if we need to, then we can.
Great comment, Kelly. Uh, do you want to keep going with childcare?
Uh, we didn't have a meeting, so just the, the part that I talked about earlier of sort of establishing this more long-term funding is what we're keeping our eye on. Um, the facilities have been running really well and they're open and Corey's working to get the childcare assessment, um, done to see, you know, how can we fit some more slots in? How can we meet this community need that we know is out there and has definitely been exacerbated by people moving into the community? Um, you know, working remotely, all of the centers are reporting that they get lots and lots of, um, calls every week, you know, we just moved here trying to get in. And unfortunately there, the response is usually, well, there's 150 people on the waitlist and, you know, so not sure what the timing will be on that, but we'll certainly add you to the list. Um, I think the biggest struggle for childcare facilities right now, now that most teachers are vaccinated and or have recently had COVID. I think the biggest struggle for childcare facilities right now, now that most teachers are vaccinated and or have recently had COVID is really just employees. Carriage House, I think, is looking to hire seven employees. And then both Timberline and Little Red have, I think, two positions open. And so they're just really struggling. I mean, you know, Carriage House has a bunch of, as far as capacity goes, ability to add more kids in, but they can't find the teachers. And we're really, as a committee, trying to look for opportunities that we could develop, you know. Is there something that we can, like a pipeline from CMC or from a Denver, you know, school that might help us with, maybe they've got some early childhood folks that want to come in and, you know, work for a year. But there's, there's a ton of expense associated with that training and things. So we're just trying to make it work, but it's the same story as many other employers. And it's just a struggle and exactly what everyone else is saying. It's not that we're not getting good applicants. We're not getting any good, any applicants at all.
Do you know, do you get a sense from them if that is a housing situation or it's just a, there's just nobody around?
Oh, that's a great question. I mean, in the past, we have definitely had it, the housing has been a situation that, you know, people have accepted a position and then called a month later saying we can't find housing. And that's, that's the very recent past, just over the winter. But more recently, there's just no one.
Haley, I read, maybe it was in the childcare update, something about not accepting subs.
Oh, so there has been, yeah, that's a great question. For some time, just to limit to contact, they weren't allowed by the county to have, you know, they had like like regular subs. So those were the subs that were really contained within the school. And so only those people could be called on if they needed, you know, they were, basically, they end up working a regular schedule. But it's just, they're a fill-in for a different person each day of the week or whatever. But because of COVID restrictions, they weren't allowing people who maybe sub once a week or something to be on their regular on-call list. So that was something that I can't remember who was following up, but somebody's following up from the committee to talk to public health about now that people are vaccinated, is there an opportunity to go ahead and open it up? It's just a little bit of a weird, you know, I think there is some caution, extra caution because kids, although they usually don't get very sick, they can get very sick and they're still not vaccinated. So I think that, you know, without knowing exactly how long the vaccine is good for and if you can still carry it if you're vaccinated, then there is some extra level of caution from public health in that scenario still.
Social equity? Carol or Dick?
Yeah, so we had a meeting last Monday. It was the bulk of the meeting. We were working with the Equity Project Consultant. She had done an organizational assessment, surveyed town employees and gave a summary of that. We're working with her on next steps as to how we're going to create kind of our guiding document, our mission statement. Which is an important step. As Shannon said, the commission is being very popular. There's a lot of different groups that want to meet with the commission and we think that's great. And we're using that as an opportunity to really start forming relationships with potential future partners. I'll kick it over to Dick in a second. This morning, a subgroup met with the nonprofit executive director group. This is the group of executive directors from the long, largest nonprofits in the county. So I'll let Dick summarize that. Tomorrow, another subgroup is meeting with the BTO to talk about different ways that the BTO could engage the Latino community specifically. We're going to give them some tips there and just have a discussion. Otherwise, next meeting, I believe the BHA is presenting on some of their need initiatives with Barney Ford. Also internally, the group will continue to work on a mission statement, their guiding documents. And then lastly, I think next meeting, we have time with Haley to really talk about a communication strategy and how we can just better communicate with the community about what the Equity Commission efforts are. Of course, always our meetings are public. We have a designated page under commission. So anyone interested can attend the meeting and email the group. But I'll kick it over to Dick. From what I heard, it was a great meeting this morning.
Yeah, it was. It was myself and three members of the commission and, you know, that's a powerful group. Jeannie from the Summit Foundation kind of drives it. And it is all the executive directors of the major nonprofits in the community. And they are very interested in, in partnering with us and, and learning more about equity. They, they reached out to the Equity Project to do, try to arrange a training. And they realized that it was, that they're pretty expensive consultants. They haven't done that yet, but you know, I think there's an enormous amount of opportunity for collaboration. They had some great questions for the commissioners. And I just have to say that the more that I work with this, this group, this commission, the nine folks, I am so impressed. I mean, we, we have got a really, really good group of people. And they're, they're really, I mean, this is an enormous undertaking. It's going to take time. But I, I'm impressed at the pace at which they're working.
That's great to hear. Okay, anybody have anything else from committees? How about other matters? Rick?
Just a quick follow-up. I talked to you about going in with the other communities to do an appreciation event for the volunteers that have been working the COVID sites. So there's about two hundred and twenty-five volunteers they want to recognize and they're finalizing the plans that would involve gift certificate for each of those volunteers. And they're going to be looking, once we pick the date, it'll be after a, at some point after a, you know, a vaccine pod was given out there. They're going to ask for some elected officials to show up and help hand out from the different communities. So I'll get, I'll reach out to you when we have that date and hopefully we can get some Breck people over there to help hand out the gift certificates.
Awesome.
We're going to split the, and we're going to split the cost
Oh, cool.
evenly amongst all the towns. So I'll take care of that.
Great. Any other matters?
Is it maybe just a question? I guess on some of Haley's materials that there's an upcoming cleanup week? Are we organizing a town cleanup week or curious what that was?
We do staff cleanup this time of year. So staff typically, under normal times, we would, you know, meet over a long lunch hour. And we would go out for two hours, different employees would go out for two hours. And we would target areas of town and then we would purchase lunch for those employees. So now it's just, they're organizing a couple town employee events where they meet for an hour or two in target areas. Just to try to get a handle on some of the exposed trash out there.
Are we going to have cleanup day this year?
I don't know the answer to that.
BOSAC is thinking of doing another duty-free Breck Day sometime in June at the trailheads.
If we're not doing town cleanup, can you send, maybe invite some of us to some of the cleanups that the staff is doing? Maybe some of us want to walk around with staff.
Yeah.
We will. I just got a text from Jen Poland that there's no town cleanup day this year.
It's funny because I just got a thing from Haley and says it's third week of May. And countywide material will come out next week, so.
Let's go with Haley.
Pretty awesome. All right, any other, 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 other matters? Okay, we have we have about twenty minutes before the night meeting. Take some time and we'll see you back here at seven.
Cool.
I'm going to call this meeting into order with roll call, please.
Ms. Sade, here. Mr. Carlton.
Here.
Mr. Bergeron.
Here.
Ms. Owens.
Here.
Mr. Kuhn.
Here.
Ms. Giallo, absent. Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right, we have approval of the minutes for April thirteen, twenty twenty-one. Any thing to change? Everybody good? We're going to accept the minutes as presented then. Agenda, Rick, any changes?
There will not be a Breck Create Update under Communications Council.
Cool, thank you. We will be moving to Communications Council in a moment. We do have three people that are going to zoom in with us today. If you do have something you'd like to say, please use the Q and A function at the bottom and we will read it out loud. But before that, I want to address a letter that we received today as a council from a group of citizens. It's called, I don't know if it's called anything, but a bunch of people signed on to this, a bunch of business people, looks like a lot of lodging and, and real estate folks in our community. And I wanted to just answer a couple of things because the council feels like there are some misrepresentations in the general body of this, of this letter. There are six bullet points that are sort of repeated throughout the letter. And I, I just want to answer these bullet points. Now, before I do that, a lot of the way that we do stuff as a council is we enact on things because we hear discussions in the community. And we use things like our resident survey data to influence and sort of inform where we go with our decisions and how we, we do stuff. We talk a lot about a lot of things in council. We talk about things that never come to pass. We talk about things that we just air and you never hear about them again. So to latch on to single bits that council says that are not voted on sometimes can be a mistake because those things go nowhere. So the first thing in this letter is that we have undertaken initiatives to curtail events. That is not true. At no point do we want to curtail events. What we have been working with our events commission on is to make sure that we have the right events and they're the right events at the right time. They're not overlapping. You wouldn't have snow sculpting at the same time that you had Oktoberfest. They're large events. We, we just want to make sure because we have heard from the community, there are too many alcohol-based events. That was the genesis of that discussion. And through those discussions, Shannon and the Events Committee have come up with a tiered structure for how we allow new events into the community. At no point have we talked about getting rid of any events. We've talked about maybe changing the way some of them are handled. We've received complaints from community members that maybe the Saturday of Oktoberfest is too uncomfortable and too problematic for the community. Maybe it'll be a ticketed event. So at no point did we really say we're going to curtail events in the community. But the pandemic has been a great point for us to sit back and look at things and make sure we're on the right track. The second one is we've begun a consideration of a moratorium on the issuance of bolt licenses. It was a discussion during one part of it, of the beginning of our topic of short-term rental and long-term rental. There was some discussion about is a moratorium a way to just freeze things at the moment while we come up with a solution? Well, we didn't go with a moratorium. The paper reported that we were going to go on a moratorium. We never really said, we, the votes weren't there out of the seven of us to have a moratorium. So to say that we've begun consideration is actually not true. We had a brief discussion about a moratorium. It didn't go any farther. Now, did a moratorium come up during our multiple roundtables that we had? Yeah, it did. It came up with some community members that feel we should have a moratorium and a cap. But they're just discussion points right now. We haven't come to any decisions on any of these things that we're talking about. So to say that we've begun consideration makes it seem like we're going in that direction when actually we are not currently going in that direction. We've started changing density code targeting fractional real estate development. This is a very specific thing that is to amenity clubs. And once again, we have heard from many people in the community that amenity clubs drive too much traffic to our community and weren't really thought about during the planning process as the planning process thought about the people that would come and stay at a unit. Not the people that could drive up and use the showers and the lockers for that day. So we're having discussions about that. There was some density discussion, but I think it's odd that that has shown up in this, in this letter. We're going to extend our, we do have a moratorium on amenity clubs. And at our last meeting, we had some discussion about this density issue and decided to table it at the top for the time. Extend the moratorium so that we could discuss this farther. The fourth one, we said publicly that we should take this time to do a reset on community priorities. We should. This is a great time for us to reset and make sure that we are on the right path for this town. That's what we're, that's what we got elected to do. We got elected to make sure that your lives are better, all of you. And that means we need to sometimes sit back and make sure that the path that we are taking is the right one. The pandemic's been hard. It's been hard on all of us. It's been hard on our kids. It's been hard on each one of us individually and we get that. But it's also given us a very rare opportunity in this community to make sure that the voices of everybody have been heard and that we're on the right path. That, that's what this is all about. So to criticize us for talking about taking time, take this time to do a reset, a reset is just making sure we're on the right path. We're really not, I mean, that's all we're doing. Number five, we've professed publicly that we want our shoulder season back. That is not a council goal. That has not been a council talking point. Some of us have, have said that, I, I will tell you right now, I own a business in this community. I rely on the tourists. But I would like, you know, I would like some of our shoulder seasons back. It's one of the reasons I love living in this town. And I know that the Destination Management Plan, one of those goals was to deliver a year-round economic, economy-driven by destination tourism year-round. I will tell you that there are other parts of that Destination Management Plan that sort of conflict with that. And they require balance from this community. And we really have to manage both of those. I don't think anybody, and let me rephrase, not everybody wants March twelve months out of the year in this community. That's really what we're talking about. And we'll never have that. We're not built for that. We don't have the infrastructure to handle that. But I do think that it's okay if some of us express our, our desire to have some lighter parts of the season. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. But that's not shared by the entire council. To say that's a council goal is really unfair to the rest of the council that does not feel that way. And we haven't taken any action towards that, towards those kind of programs. Finally, we rejected a privately funded workforce housing proposal. Yes, we did. And I'll tell you why we did. And there were multiple issues, but the number one issue is it's on the wrong side of Highway Nine. We currently have a crisis situation on the south end of town where people at the end of the day block traffic walking across from the village to F-lock parking. It's a situation we do not want to read, we don't want to duplicate on the north end of town. There is a large development that will be a mixture potentially of timeshare and, and hotel going on North Gondola. They're planning on utilizing the Gold Rush for a parking structure and, and some housing for their employees. They asked us to join in. We decided that we didn't want to add to what can possibly be a situation of getting people across the highway. They're planning on some ways around that. But at that point, this council did not feel that that was where we wanted to go with our housing. We really try to sit housing in places where we have some adequate service for the people that are living there. We don't just build housing because we have a housing problem, which we do. And we don't feel that it's proper for the future of the community to just put housing anywhere, anywhere that it's, it's possible to go. There are multiple things we need to work on. And like I said, we build a lot of housing and we build it in places where we provide busing. There's safe travel for people. People can get their car in and out. They can walk across their street. And that's why the council did that. Now, that's come up a bunch of times that we refused to do this housing. We really haven't talked about it much, but that's really the reason. We just didn't feel like it was the proper place to, to add on. At the end of this, it just asked that there's a two-way dialogue with the council on the aforementioned topics. I will tell you, I really feel like, you know, and I, I've been doing this for a while. This is my fourth council I've I will tell you, I really feel like, you know, and I I've been doing this for a while. This is my fourth council I've sat on. I feel that this council is more approachable, has reached out more to this community, has read more emails, has done more videos, has talked to more people. So to say that we have not been two ways in our dialogue, I I take, I really don't take that well. I have spent countless hours, in particular during the pandemic, reaching out to this community and asking for your opinion, asking for you to help us with these issues. And honestly, these, some of these topics that we, you know, in particular, the short term rental and long term rental topic, we have asked for help from the community. We've set up roundtables. We're going to have a bigger discussion later that later in May. We've asked for for help with our answers. We're not doing things in an echo chamber of just us. Believe me, none of us like operating on Zoom. I would rather be face to face with all of you right now, as with the council. But this is just where we are right now. And we've really tried our best to engage you as a community. I've given out mayor@townofbreck.com constantly. I've talked to many people through the community. So I just wanted to clear some of those up because this this letter has gone through the community pretty fast. We generally don't respond to things, in particular in the paper, because I feel that it's really detrimental to our community to have fights in the newspaper about it. But I thought that some of these falsehoods really needed to be addressed right now. So thank you for allowing me to take the time to just talk about this a little bit. I'm sure that the people that wrote the letter probably don't agree with what I've just said, and that's okay, too. We're all about having disagreements and getting to a better place with it. So thank you. We will now move. Did the council have anything to add? Anybody? All right. We're going to now move to public comment. There's nothing in the Q and A. So we have three people that we're going to have come over and talk. We have a three minute time limit, so please stay to three minutes. We have a lot of other business tonight. Who's first, Shannon? Shannon, I can't hear you. You don't look like you're on mute, though.
Try again.
There you go. Sweet.
Yeah. Helen, who's coming over from the heart group?
A woman named Jackie Christensen Ray sent an email earlier today.
Chris, can you bring her over?
There she is, Christians.
Hi, Jackie. How are you?
Hi, you all. Thank you so much for allowing me to share who starting hearts is tonight. We're new to the county. I'm the Director of Operations for Starting Hearts and the Summit County Project Director. I'm here to tell you about starting hearts. We're new to the community and not asking for anything in particular tonight, just explaining who we are and what we plan to do in the communities of Summit County. So we're a nonprofit organization dedicated to helping save lives of sudden cardiac arrest victims. And sudden cardiac arrest is the nation's number one cause of death, and we lose approximately 400,000 people in the nation every year. That's over 1,000 lives lost per day. So death from sudden cardiac arrest is preventable through early intervention, public education and access to widespread defibrillators. So our life saving programs include include free education and training of our call push shock class, which teaches individuals how to properly respond in the event of a sudden cardiac arrest. We also work with community stakeholders to help place additional public access defibrillators where needed in highly trafficked areas of the community. So after 10 years in neighboring Eagle County, we recently opened our Summit County office in Frisco. And over the past 10 years, we've had the opportunity to educate more than 30,000 individuals from five years and up in how to properly respond in the event of a sudden cardiac arrest. We have BGV gives to thank for inviting us to Summit County to create a starting house community here that helps save more lives of our residents and our visitors. So through their wonderful support of our educational efforts in Summit County, we've been training the students of public Summit County Public Schools since 2018. But most recently in December 2020, BGV gives generously granted us funds for phase one of our program, which included a countywide defibrillator audit and inspection. So this effort determined the location and condition of all the defibrillators. And we created a database which we've shared with the county's 911 dispatch. So currently, no surprise to you, I'm sure, Breck has the highest number of D fibs in the county. And there's a need for a few more different locations. But there's nearly 300 defibrillators in the county. Breck, including all the public safety agencies, has about 140 or so. But a lot of them are from the original Keep the Beat program 15 years ago are they're not maintained and they're beyond their their service life. So we believe it's important to include Summit County government bodies and officials as important stakeholders in our future plans. And we're working with local towns as well as Summit County Public Safety Agencies and county commissioners to implement our effective and life saving programs for the county. And we're looking forward to your support as well. So our next steps are to spread awareness in the county, attain support from community government and start teaching the citizens of our county these life saving skills. And through the financial support of BGV gives and other Summit County stakeholders and government entities, we look forward to being able to help increase the number of cardiac arrest survivors in Summit. So we'll come back to you at a later time with any specific needs. But for now, as I mentioned, we're just asking for your support of our starting arts community.
That's great. Jackie, thank you so much for coming to talk to us.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate it.
Have a great day.
Thank you. Take care.
Okay, next. Hello, Mary.
Good evening, everyone.
Welcome back.
Thank you. First of all, I listened to your workshop this afternoon. And I can't tell you how encouraged I was. So I look forward to contributing and helping out in whatever way. And I know that I speak for our entire lodging community. We want what is right and best for Breckenridge Summit County. But today I wanted to share with you just a little misconception. It's a common misconception that that second homeowners are buying homes in Breckenridge to rent them out. They are not. Buyers are buying because they fell in love with Breckenridge and they want to spend their time here. This is their vacation home, a place to bring their family and friends, not an investment property. Now, I talked to at least one buyer a week. Just got one today. They're asking me the same type of questions. My big question is, with the expense of the mortgage, taxes, insurance, association dues and property management fees, is it possible to come close or even possibly break even? Well, I always have to give them the bad news. They will not. So yes, are there investors buying up some properties? Sure. But there are always those who find a loophole, right? But but that I think that 99% of all the homeowners we manage, they are buying it for personal reasons. So if you look at the assessors data, half of the second homeowners in Breckenridge are from the front range. This is their backyard. If you limit short term rentals, then they will simply not rent and not contribute to our local economy. They will not give up their dream of having, they will not give up their dream housing, a dream to house the locals here. We manage over 40 long term local, excuse me, long term rentals, all for workforce housing. I see how the numbers work when comparing long term versus short term renting. Unless you are a ski in ski out condo in a resort building, you will always make more money renting long term. But if you want to make more money, then you have to give up the dream of coming to Breckenridge, vacationing with your family and friends and building memories here. This is why it will be difficult to convert short term rentals to long term. Incentives may work for some, but we need to explore other options, too. Short term rentals are not the cause of workforce housing troubles. Short term rentals is a result of an underlying challenge of Breckenridge being so desirable. It's a very popular second home and a retirement destination. So limiting short term rentals will not change this. Lodging community and the business community have a lot to share and inform, inform. Our community deserves to be served with the best decisions, as you made points today, based on fact based data, not anecdotes or assumptions. So I am again very encouraged by this afternoon's workshop and I look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Hey, Eric, can I ask Mary a quick question?
Yeah, go ahead, Kelly.
Um, Mary, some of the people we've talked to have said maybe some sort of a property share program would work like if you own a home here, but you maybe rent it all winter long to an employee. And then there's a property share program that you could, you know, put in for a week for that property. Do you see that as something that people would be interested in? Or do they really just want to come to their house?
I think that in my own experience, some of our homeowners, especially ones that own large homes and it's rented, and they want to come out last minute, then we put them up in a different property. And they are okay with that because they would rather take the income of a large property versus all they need is a studio or one bedroom. So I think that that idea can work in some situations. I would explore every single, you know, no leave no stones unturned because and as Rick mentioned, this is a daunting task. It's going to involve a tremendous amount of work and time to gather the data that you're seeking because there's not an infrastructure there. We'd like to help in pointing you in the right direction and how to gather data. I know that my husband, Mark, he's looked up some census data that gave us a pretty good understanding of, okay, how many, how many people who work here are really living in Breckenridge? So yes, I think that our property management companies would be interested in soliciting some owners for any and all types of ideas. We want to thrive. We don't want to be restricted. And in order to do that for our own success, survival, we are on the same team, right? We want to work together. So yes, Kelly.
Thank you.
I have just a quick question for Mary Eric. So Mary, you have 37 employees, correct?
Yes.
Where do they live?
Yes, I would say that between Frisco, I have some, I would say, good handful in Breckenridge renting. Some had to go over the pass to Fair Play to buy in Wellington neighborhood in Breckenridge and a good handful over in Dillon Valley, Summit Cove and Wilderness.
Do you have a sense how many actually live in Breck? Are we able to live in Breck? That would be, that would be, you know, as a just as a kind of a cross section of a thriving management company, it'd be interesting to know how many can in fact live in veil themselves to public transportation to get to your your shop.
I would like to.
You don't have to.
I'll get that data to you. Give me a couple of days. I'm also very interested, too. So I'd like to share that. And not only that, we could probably poll our property managers in Breckenridge and ask how many of their employees.
That'd be good. That would be good to know. So well, cool. Thank you. Thank you.
Mary, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay, we have one more.
Chris, can you bring over Ashley?
And then there is a, there is a comment from Dan Corwin. That's an interesting. Hi, Ashley, how are you?
Hi, good. How are y'all today?
Welcome.
Good. Thank you. I wanted to just, first of all, I wanted to address the letter that you mentioned, Eric. I wanted to clarify that the letter was emailed over from the Summit Alliance of Vacation Rentals, which is kind of a new iteration of the Breck Lodging Association that we've created just to be more inclusive of other members throughout the county. That was, that letter was written in conjunction with several other organizations. But I just wanted you to be aware of who that was emailed from. My name was actually on the email, but it wasn't, you know, from me specifically. So and I wanted to just kind of poke poke in today and just share a few things that we have been experiencing at River Ridge Rentals. You know, we're a small property management company in the area. We've been in Breckenridge for 17 years now. And and we manage 55 properties. We do specialize in the larger single family homes. And a trend that we have noticed in the past few months is actually a lot of our properties are selling. We've lost about 10% of our inventory because they are selling to buyers who are not planning to rent them at all, short term or long term. And, you know, this is a, you know, a function of our real estate market being just crazy right now. And and, you know, a lot of different dynamics of, you know, people being able to work remotely and you know, just all different kinds of factors that we have going on right now. But I just, I wanted to share that information because there was, I got the impression that there was the feeling that there was a ramping up of new short term rentals. And that's just not what I've been seeing from my side. I also did check some VRBO data on the number of listings that they had because I wanted to kind of cross reference. Am I an anomaly or am I, you know, similar to the market? And the market, you know, holds true to that as well. The number of properties on VRBO is roughly the exact same as it was this time last year. So so I just, I wanted y'all to be aware of that and and how that translates into licensing as you're thinking about how to get good data. You know, all these properties that are transacting, you know, their licenses aren't up until September, but they're not going to, you know, come back and and notify that typically that doesn't end up happening. So the license will just set unused. And then if in the event that someone buys that property and does file for a bolt license, it can look like a new license on top of another one, even though they're the exact same property. So I wanted to, you know, point out and share that. And I wanted to just, you know, kind of reiterate what Mary said, that we in the logic community do want to work with you guys to solve this issue because it is a huge pain point for us as well. I'm struggling to hire, just like I know a lot of others are. And, you know, we we know that we need solutions for the housing situation. I just, I don't see limiting STRs as solving that problem because I know my owners and I know they love to come to their property and they love Breckenridge and they want to be here and they want to be here, you know, four weeks out of the year in January, February, July and and December. And so that that's going to create a big challenge. So I just, I wanted to, like I said, point out that, you know, we want this solved, just like everybody else does. I just want to make sure that we're coming up with solutions that are going to be effective.
Ashley, thank you so much. Is that, how far back does that VRBO information go?
It goes back to last year. They can provide a lot more in depth information and I'm sure they'd be happy to do so. But I'll email you what I have. It's just
That'd be great.
A market report.
Just send it to the mayor of Town of Breckenridge.
I'll send it over.
Ashley, thanks for your time. Go ahead, Kelly.
Can I ask one question, Ashley? I have a couple of theories as to why this could be happening. But so for the short term lodging, like when we're looking at taxable sales in 2018, we were looking at, you know, like 50 million, but in 2020, it was like 62 million. So if there aren't more short term rentals, how how would we describe that?
So 2020 was such a crazy year. Yeah, we were shut down, obviously, for several months. So we had no, no revenue. But yet summer was such a huge amount of demand that we were able to charge higher rates than typical. Usually we end up discounting towards the end just to fill in holes and we never, we never discounted anything last year. And then we also saw a huge amount of business in September and October last year that we would normally never see. So when I look at my numbers from 2020, we had, you know, this quarter, Q two, where we were down, you know, incredibly, and then Q three and Q four, we were up year over year. So I think that is definitely a piece of what you're seeing. I know also I've got a lot of international owners who couldn't come to their property at all. So like one of them, they are from Singapore and they come for three months every year. And so their property is not a short term rental when they're in their property, of course. And so they couldn't come this past year. And that's, that's true for about five or six of my 55 properties. So.
Okay, thanks. That helps me understand that.
Just a few different dynamics.
Thanks a lot.
Ashley, how is, how is your staffing doing? Are you able to staff and and where those that you have hired already, are they able to live in a within the community?
And they're within the county, yes. But they're, you know, a lot of them are in Silverthorne, Frisco, Dillon, Wilderness areas. We need, you know, more staff. We're always needing staff. And it is an ongoing challenge. But, you know, like I said, you know, we want to solve this problem as well. But you know, like I said, you know, we want to solve this problem as well and and get more people uh on this, on staff. Because that's the number one thing that stops us from even expanding ourselves as a business and and offering more services and and. You know, like, you know, we'd love to add, you know, more housekeeping services and different things that we could offer. And yet we just don't have the people to do it.
And you've been, you guys have been around for a while. Has has that situation? Worrisened in the last couple of years or has it always been a struggle to get help?
I mean, it's always been a struggle and part of the struggle is just because we are such a transient seasonal community. And so um, you know, people oftentimes leave at the end of the season and then we're kind of back to, back to square one. But it has absolutely been worse in the last, you know, I'd say three to four years.
Okay. Are you looking for a columnist?
Not hiring.
I, I think it's a blog writer.
I, I got, I got, I got places. Yeah, I got a place to live. Cool. Thank you very much.
Ashley, thanks for coming on tonight. Appreciate it.
Everybody.
All right. Uh, did everybody get a chance to read Dan's comment? It was pretty long. It's, it's good. Can we um make sure we have that, Shannon? I don't know if we can save these things and and make sure the council can read it. It's, it's actually pretty informative. It's nice to have Dan Corwin back.
Can we share that Eric or how, oh, can you read it? I have. Never mind.
It's pretty long. So, but I want, you know, it's, I, all of these, all of these little things, I think. Everything that we hear is just a little bit more information that we can use to inform our decisions when the time comes. So thank you all for uh Marion Ashley. Thanks for coming on and telling us, you know, something about your business. Everybody's business is different. All these lodging businesses are a little different. You know, there's high end renters, there's. There's, you know, the more low end. So it'll be interesting as we move through this to really get our arms around some of this information. Okay, that's it for communications. Uh, we have some new business this evening. First bit of uh new business is a first reading of Council Bill number nine, series 2021. It's an emergency ordinance requiring compliance with local, state and federal orders requiring the wearing of face coverings. And before I turn this over to Tim, if you want to comment on any of these uh next. Two council bills and one resolution, you can start typing in the Q and A right now.
Eric, Eric, Rick's going to do this one.
Oh, all right, Rick.
Uh, thank you, counsel. This is an emergency ordinance that we're bringing to you because. You know, the current health crisis that we're in, we think it's imperative that that the uh this take uh effect immediately. And so that we have people complying with whatever the current rules are regarding uh the wearing of face mask. So with this particular ordinance that you have in front of you, it will do two things. First, it will repeal the current ordinance that's in place that uh created the mandatory mask zone. As we're transitioning uh to lesser restrictions in COVID, it's not necessary anymore for the town to have the mandatory mass zone that was set up in areas of town. So we want to repeal that and we want to replace it with this ordinance that requires people to wear a face covering. That complies with whatever the local uh order is in place at the time. So.
Thanks, Rick. Any questions for Rick?
So, so Rick, this, this actually will be a bit more lenient uh mandate than it is currently.
Oh, yes. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, just to.
Especially with the outdoor wearing a face mask. Well, the current one requires when they're in these mandatory zones, they have a face mask on at all times. Well, now, I mean, the, the current orders now outdoors says that you don't need one unless you're going to be. Amongst non household members for at least, you know, within less than six feet distance for more than 15 minute period.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this? I'm going to give you uh 30 seconds. All right, and that ends the public comment period. Is there a motion?
On first reading, I move we pass council bill number nine, series 2021, the title has just been read into the record.
For, forgive me here, there, this is an emergency ordinance. There will only be, there will only be one reading.
Yes, thank you, Tim.
Jeffrey, would you?
Yes.
I move that we uh pass council bill number nine, series 2021, an emergency ordinance of which the title has been read into the record.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion about?
I would just like to point out to everybody that as a, as a um. Emergency ordinance, it has a different requirement of to pass and you, you guys all know there has to be.
Five of the six.
Yes, five of the six. So.
See if we can get.
Two people, two people can ruin it for everybody.
Roll call please, Helen.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, we have a first reading of council bill number 10, series 2021 and ordinance extending until August 26, 2021. Temporary moratorium on the submission, acceptance, processing and approval of any application for a town of Breckenridge development permit. That includes as a part thereof, an amenity club declaring an emergency and providing for an immediate effective date of this ordinance. Tim.
Eric, this is me. The town's current moratorium on development permit applications that include an amenity club is set to expire on May 26. This ordinance, if adopted, would extend that moratorium from May 26 to August 26 to allow the council and the town staff. To continue to work and to try to um determine how to regulate amenity clubs. It was pretty clear from our last meetings discussion that we need more time to do that. This ordinance is set up as an emergency ordinance because there's not enough time. To adopt this ordinance as a non emergency ordinance before the May 26 moratorium expires. And we don't want there to be a gap between. One moratorium and a second moratorium. We want the moratorium to be continuous. So um, that's why uh this is an emergency ordinance.
Tim, thank you. Any questions for Tim? You know, anyone in the public wish to comment on this moratorium that is an emergency ordinance? Please, you have 20, uh, you have 20, you have 30 seconds beginning right now to put it in the Q and A box at the bottom. All right, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
First reading, I move we pass council bill number 10, an emergency ordinance. Given on first reading, I move we pass the emergency orders, council bill number 10, series 2021, the title which has been read into the record.
Again, for clarification, emergency ordinances only have one reading. So.
Okay.
It would be best to avoid any misunderstanding or ambiguity to simply ask that the ordinance. Be adopted as an emergency ordinance, the title of which has been read into the record.
Can I have a do over on this one?
Yes, you can.
I move we pass council bill number 10, a emergency ordinance, uh, series 2021, the title which has been read into the record.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I don't know why I make all these ordinances. Often I make a mistake.
You're great, Jeffrey. Don't let anybody tell you otherwise.
Don't, don't patronize me.
It's my best quality. Helen, go ahead. Roll call.
Ms. Sade. Yes. Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, we have one resolution this evening. It's resolution number nine, series 2021. It's a resolution approving a revised policy for the investment of town funds. Hello, Brian.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Uh, if approved, this resolution will put into effect a revised investment policy for the town of Breckenridge. That will maintain our main criteria, which are safety, liquidity and yield. But will also add consideration of environmental, social and governance factors or ESG factors. As they're known as an additional criteria when considering future investments. There are a lot of municipalities adopting these kinds of considerations in their investment policies, Summit County. Frisco has also done it and we're following suit and would like to see this resolution approved so we can put into effect the new investment policy.
Thanks, Brian. Any questions for Brian? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this resolution this evening? You have 30 seconds.
Oh, that was a social government ESG.
You uh talking to yourself?
I, I wasn't sure what ESG meant, but I got it now. I can tell you guys later if you want.
That'd be great. All right, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I move we pass resolution number nine, 2021, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call please, Helen.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right.
Thank you.
That's it for uh legislation this evening. We have planning commission decisions um from the 20th of April. Are there any call ups this evening? Seeing none, that means the planning commission decisions stand as presented. We have uh, we've already done a report of the town manager and staff and a report of the mayor and council. Are there any other matters this evening? For the good of the cause. All right.
Just a, just a real quick reminder uh to those listening that uh BOSAC will be doing a uh. Uh, duty free Breck poop pickup on some of the trailheads and that will be on a date to um to be named later. Probably sometime in June. So uh, if any of you singles out there are looking for a first date, this would be a good time to, you know. Hook up for a worthy cause.
Ooh, and if you are out there on B and B and find my AirPods.
Yeah, I've called her about 10 times and every time she's on B and B looking for those stupid AirPods.
Did you lose both of them?
No, she, she lost a whole package.
Yeah, I put them in the thing and I thought I put it in my pocket, but I must have missed it.
That's a bummer. Sorry to hear that. Anything else? All right. Great work tonight, this gang. Um, everybody that uh stuck with us till the end, thanks for joining and we will be back on uh. When are we going to be back? The 11th of May. May is right around the corner. So have a wonderful afternoon, everybody. We're, things are getting better.
Peace out.
Thank you.